The Board of Supervisors of the County of Delmar and the governing body of all other special assessments and taxing districts for which said board so acts is now meeting in regular session. Only those items that indicate a specific time will be heard at that assigned time. All other items may be taken out of sequence to accommodate the public and staff availability, and I'm going to lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, with its standing, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, are there any introduction of new employees? Okay, seeing no introduction to new employees, council on reportable actions for unclosed session?
No.
Okay. At this point, are there any deletions, corrections, or additions from board members to the agenda at this time? In order to add an item to the agenda, the matter must have come to the attention of the county subsequent to the posting of the agenda, and the matter requires action before the next regular meeting of Board of Supervisors. Okay, I do have one urgency item. It is basically to allow us direct staff to complete the following tasks in relations to the PILP monies owed to Delmar County, which is the payment in lieu of taxes money for fishing game. Their current bill that they owe us is over $600,000 at this point for property they own in Delmar County and have not paid. So this would be just to send a letter out to encourage the legislator to budget in and start the paying of PILP going forward, which the fishing games always argue that they don't. It's budgeted but not appropriated. So it's a plan words, but essentially they owe us money and they need to start paying their bill. So I will go ahead and I'm going to add that on to the agenda. We'll take it up a little. I think it would be just on the timing of staff to get the letter out as soon as possible.
Yeah, it's based on the timing of getting it to the legislature, and there's an actual campaign being initiated at this point, and that initial letter they're attempting to have out by Friday of this week.
So it arose subsequent posting of the agenda and requires action prior to our next meeting?
Yes, it does.
Phil move.
Second.
All this in favor?
Aye.
Okay, anyone? So it's on the agenda now. Okay, so we are going to go into, we're going to listen to brief reports and announcements relative to the County of Delmar programs and projects, progress by the two-by-two committees, goal committees, and our board, staff travel, training reports. So let's start with Supervisor Finnegan.
Okay, just had a few meetings, even though they were long ones. Started with the State Association Executive Retreat by the Executive Board where we did an evaluation of our new executive director, who I think I've reported out as Matt Kate used to be the former Secretary of Corrections. And part of it was his evaluation, part of it was a recap of the legislation that took place, some of it very innocuous and some of it very helpful to counties. But charting a plan to go forward to continue to help counties through CSAC. There was a couple of personnel changes. There is a new, Jean Jordan is now the Director of Administration there that will cooperate with Matt Kate. She came from the District Attorneys, I believe, Association, but has a longstanding relationship in administration and just a heck of an asset. Done a great job every place she's gone. And then there's going to be a new corporate finance person or corporate associates person helping in the finances with CSAC, and that'll be on board this week. So great direction, the team keeps getting stronger. Had participated with the sheriff and the rest of the supervisors with the Smith River Rancheria where they presented the sheriff with a check, sizable check, and he'll probably comment on that, over $100,000. Great relationship building there. I also attended just recently Digital Divide Conference down in Sacramento. I was invited by Sonny McPeak, former Commerce Secretary, I believe, as well as a legislator. But she now is the Executive Director of the California Emerging Technology Fund, and she has been championing broadband throughout the state. We're talking about the middle mile and whatnot. But something that came out there was that the underserved, it's not so much just because you're in a rural county, or that broadband isn't there. Actually, the largest percent of people that are underserved are the impoverished. And so I ask that as we develop solutions, even in our community, that we look at those that can't afford rather than don't have service. So going forward, I'll be working with Social Services, Mental Health, Gary Blatnick, as well as with Dan McCorkle and IT on some of the programs that they had that perhaps would be best practices. I mean, we're going to continue to work on grants to extend that middle mile in this community and extend services to Klamath as well as North. And we're going to have redundancy here within a week, I believe. But there was programs that some of the youth in, say, for example, Juvenile Hall, you take broke computers and you teach them how to fix the computers, you give them a trade so coming out they have a job. Also, some of the more impoverished in our area, that if the county has a surplus or some of these computers that got fixed by, say, the juveniles at Juvenile Hall, that then they could be turned over at a discounted rate to people that don't have them that might be impoverished. Anyway, I was asked to co-host it as the President of CSAC, so it was a great two days down there. And then last weekend, participated in Parkway Cleanup, Parkway Drive. There was initiative started by the Dundas Neighborhood Watch to, Parkway looks clean when you drive down there except for a few spots, but we gathered, there was 40 other people besides myself, so we had 41 people that signed in. The road department helped very much. I want to thank the road department, I want to thank Heidi from CDD. They provided signs, bags, vests, some of the pickers. There was 50 bags of trash that was collected, and then the road department came along Monday morning and picked it up for us. So great community effort, thanks to everybody that participated, and that was about it.
All right. Thank you. Supervisor McClure.
Yes, thank you. Since our last meeting, I have attended the Coastal Commission meeting in San Diego, and the final airport CDP, I think, has been signed, and so we're moving forward with that. I attended a meeting at Delmar County Unified School District on their facilities planning and their ideas of what can happen with High School and Sunset, and just starting down the road of what's going to be happening with the bond dollars. I met with Paul Crandall, who is the new Director at Humboldt Area Foundation, and talked extensively about some dream projects that I have for Delmar County, and we just kind of just talked about the possibilities of what can be done and how we can work together. EMS, we had our meeting, and there's just oversight of making sure that ambulances and that services are being met throughout the district. We reach all the way to Trinity County. The Redwood Park Association has, we survived the government shutdown, which meant that we couldn't open our doors to the visitor's center, but we were able to redirect people to visitor's centers in state parks. So that was a plus to get people to spend some time in Delmar County. And we are meeting this week to do a strategic plan, which hopefully will start to build a Redwood Institute of people coming and taking classes and encouraging visitors on a larger scale. So I think that that is a future that we see because a lot of people, whatever we do a project as, like the stargazing project, we have 40 people that sign up, you know, so they come from all over the nation, and it's just a way to get visitors into Delmar County and to get our incredible redwoods on everyone's life list. And then I do have one concern that came to me via the treasurer, and it was just a question about, do we have an ordinance that has oversight on vacation rentals? And my first response was, no, we did not, because we really don't have, we don't require business licenses. But then I started thinking about it longer, and I started thinking about, are we making sure that there are fire alarms in the rentals and that kind of safety issues? So I was just wanting to bring it up, and then I guess it would probably be community development to take a look at other communities of what they do with vacation rentals to make sure that there's a safety issue like we would do at hotels, what we require. So I'm just kind of putting that out there, asking if we can take a look at it.
Okay, thank you. Supervisor Hemmingson.
Yes, good morning. I attended the presentation by Mark Baird on the possible withdrawal of, I think it was 12 or 13 counties in California informing Jefferson State. Interesting presentation, he was a very good speaker, it was interesting to listen to, we'll see where it goes. Had a Citizens Advisory Committee meeting in Pelican Bay State Prison, met the new acting warden. As you recall, our warden has retired, and we've had Mr. Ducart stepping in as the acting warden, but now we have a permanent acting warden until April, if that's very permanent. His name is Ron Barnes. He came from Susanville, High Desert Prison in Susanville, so he'll be here till April. Hopefully by then we will have a permanent warden out there. I think Mr. Ducart has put his application in for that position. And we also had some presentations on prison meals, and just for your information, we pay approximately $3.25 per day, per prison, for three meals a day, approximately 3,000 calories. That's just an informational thing, so that'd be like three happy meals, I guess. Anyway, had a local transportation commission where we had a presentation from Talitha Hodgson. She is the Caltrans engineer that was the engineer on the Confusion Hill Project, so I think her expertise is going to be of great interest in that project. The presentation was well-attended, there's quite a few people there. The only disappointing issue that I saw was that they want two years to do the engineering, the analysis on the project, and, you know, she throws a little caveat in there that if we were to push it any faster than that, the project would not be as good of a project and may not get funded, may not get processed. So a little disappointing that they've been studying this, well, since 1923, I guess, but since 1987, they've done analysis and studies, and it seems like they would have enough to put together to come up with a pretty decent project in a lot less time. Anyway, two years is their planning process at this point, and we, if that's hard and fast, we need to make sure they stick to it. I did attend Sea Cruise, which seemed to have a few more cars and well-attended until the rain and people kind of scattered, but a lot of people hung around. I always enjoy the two gals from, the two girls from Oregon, I don't know exactly where they were from, at Gold Beach, I think, passing notes, their little duet that does a real nice job out in front of the gazebo, and then, of course, an Elvis impersonator, not nearly as impressive. Had a Future Facilities meeting where the main discussion was the new rental property that we have for the expansion for mental health and Health and Human Services Administration. So that looks very promising, a good project that will be coming before the board here shortly. And as Supervisor Finnegan said, was participated in the check presentation of over $110,000 to the county from the Smith River Rancheria to the Sheriff's Department, basically. And that was all good, and that was it for me.
All right, thank you. Supervisor Gitlin.
Thank you. Jefferson State is very much in our Delmar County news. Along with Supervisor Hemmingson, immediately after the Tuesday Board of Supervisors meeting last, it was my pleasure to introduce Mark Baird from Jefferson State Declaration Committee at the Tea Party Patriots meeting at the Fairgrounds. Mark's presentation was very profound. I had already known this, but to hear it again, of the 40 state senators and 80 assembly members serving the near 40 million people in the Golden State, Los Angeles County alone has 24 assembly members and 11 state senators. As for the 13 counties Jefferson State would comprise if it were allowed to constitutionally break off and become a new state, there are a mere total of six, three in the Assembly and three in the State Senate, to represent that population. Clearly, something is not right here. The representation needs to be reevaluated. There must be a change in the way rural California is represented in the state. Following that, I attended the International Walk to School, which was last Wednesday, participated in that day, I helped out at Best Maxwell School. I observed children walking on the left and riding their bikes on the right. Thank you Best Maxwell Principal Will Einman, you and Project Coordinator Karen Phillips for conducting this great event. It was my pleasure to participate. Solid Waste, attended the monthly Solid Waste Authority meeting. Authority is still actively looking for a qualified consultant to address the direction of the authority. Nothing new to report, however, there will be a meeting tomorrow, Wednesday, at 3:00. Thursday, I was an observer in the Delmar Local Transportation Commission meeting, as Supervisor Hemmingson referred to, heard from Last Chance Grade Project Manager Talitha Hodgson, whose words still are resounding in me. We need to rise the challenge and make our case, and that's what we're doing, making our case to build an alternate route around Last Chance Grade. Sea Cruise Car Show, that was Friday and Saturday, I assisted both days, very successful Sea Cruise Car Event. I think there were over 400 entries, and was salivating at some of the vehicles at the show. It was just very powerful looking at some of these vehicles, and the money that's put into these cars is incredible. Little rain popped up in the afternoon, but the event was certainly a great success, thanks to Gary Peterson of Northern Knights Car Club, all the folks at the Sea Cruise Car Show Committee, including Visitors Bureau Director Jeff Palmer, did a great job. Agency on Aging, last Tuesday, I made a report to the Agency on Aging High Cap Meeting, which met at the Senior Center on the Status of Sutter Coast Hospital. The advisory board for the agency has gone on record as opposing hospital devolvement to critical access as an impact on our seniors would be profound. Also attended the Health Benefits Workshop at the Veterans Memorial Hall, met the vendors and lots of dedicated county employees going over to the hall during their lunch hour for that event. Veterans Day Committee met Wednesday, this past Wednesday, and we're going to have our parade again this year, as we do every year. I announced at that meeting that Siskiyou County Sheriff John Lopey, who's a retired Colonel in the United States Marine Corps, will be the guest speaker at the Veterans Day Dinner, November 11th, that's Monday. North Coast Air Quality Board Thursday, traveled to Eureka to attend our monthly North Coast Air Quality Management Meeting. The board recognized the excellent work of Air Pollution Control Officer Rick Martin. He's doing a great job, but the one area where we're having some problems is working with our federal partner in culling down the forest. The district has suffered lots of wildfires, and quite frankly, I think we're really very lucky this year it wasn't worse. So we're trying to work with our federal partners in developing a plan to trim down our forests and reduce the fuel there. Again, with Supervisor Hemmingson, attended the Future Facilities Meeting and learned that Health and Human Services will be contracting for an additional 3,400 square feet of space to serve the needs of its clientele. I guess supervisors go where the money is at 4:30, rushed over to the Smith River Rancheria and observed a check for $110,000 and some change, big check, it's quite interesting to look at, and again, given to Sheriff Wilson for the purchase and staffing of two new vehicles to serve the enforcement needs of the tribe and the community. Citizens Advisory Committee on Last Chance Grade in relationship to the meeting at LTIC last Friday, the citizen group invited me to its meeting. Their co-chairman Kurt Strenberg and former supervisor Chuck Blackburn told us that there are a number of governances, including the city of Crescent City, have written letters to the Local Transportation Committee urging the commission to make its case to build an alternate route around Last Chance Grade, and it will continue that effort in reaching out to the business community and all vested interested partners in lobbying and making our case to find that alternate route around this precarious spot in the road. Friday, attended abatement court and watched, observed Judge Kater's case as part of a representative from Take a Bite Out of Blight. Our partner Daily Bread Ministries is seeking homes occupied by the elderly and disabled to help these folks in real need to maintain the exteriors of their property, and we are there at the abatement court to see if there's a need for us to help and pitch in. And again, I want to give credit to our CAO Jay Serena, job well done, finding the funds and having our old CDD building on G Street removed. As you know, that's within the city limits. Crescent City and Delmar County have been working collaboratively to remove this blight. This eyesore has been sitting there for, I believe, pretty much a decade. It lies within the city limits, and Delmar County has taken a big bite out of blight by removing this building. The only disappointment I have on this issue is, on this demolition, is that I was sorry to see there was no local contract bidders for this project. I think it's really vital to support our local businesses whose zip codes are in Crescent City, Fort Dix, Smith River, Hayuchi, Gasky, and Klamath, to keep the money in Delmar County. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, attended the Delmar Solid Waste Management Meeting. As Supervisor Gitlin mentioned, we're going to be reviewing RFP tomorrow at the meeting at 3:00. Also attended the Smith River Rancheria presentation of the check to the sheriff, and we're very grateful on that. As you know, budgets are always tight right now, and having the ability to have a local partner in the process is very, very helpful, so we want to thank them for that. Tended a gender review. I didn't get a chance to attend the Jefferson State presentation, but I did watch it online. It was very informative and pretty interesting. I actually expected a guy in a suit and tie, and that's not the way he presented, so I will see what, more to come on that, I'm sure. Tended the, I was there for the first day of Sea Cruise. The cars, as Supervisor Gitlin said, are pretty impressive. People put a lot of their heart and soul into that thing, and I think the thing that kind of got unnoticed that was pretty impressive is, this is the first, I believe this is the first one, the Northern Knights actually transitioned from the Crescent City Car Club. So that's been the thing in the past, if you remember about the Knoll Surfboard Contest, that died because there wasn't a group to carry it on, and this one is actually transitioning to a new group partnering with the Chamber of Commerce to continue with this event. And it's one of the largest in the county in terms of bringing tourists here. So glad to see that was a success also. Good job to staff also on, Jay, on working on, I know you've been working on that for several years, on tearing that CDD building down. For those of you who are not familiar with it, it's a building across from the courthouse. Well, it was a building across from the courthouse. It's empty now, so there's nothing there. And then other than that, just on a personal note, my son had his tonsils removed, and that was an interesting process. I haven't, he's back at school already, so it's, I didn't think they did that anymore, but apparently they still do in some cases, so.
Yellow and ice cream.
Yeah, yeah, he found out that he's not really inclined to eat ice cream when he's right after the surgery. Didn't really help him that much, so.
That's why it's offered to him.
Yeah, he can get his, eat as much as you want if you can get it down. Okay, so we're going to go onto a brief report from the County Ministry of Officer. Jay?
As a note, yeah, appreciate the statements about 705th. One thing that should be noted in regards to the bidding process is that we don't control who responds to the bids. It was advertised locally in the triplicate, as well as it was sent out further than that, and we had two bidders, both of them are from Redding, and we take the lowest responsive by law. So it is good that we were able to finally get the funding together to be able to deal with the building, and we will be looking at the long-term use of that property as well as the lots that are adjacent to that, that half block. We've also been working on employee negotiations and negotiations on contracts, as well as doing research into some of the legislation that's been passed now, and also dealing with some of our other contracts that are going to be coming up. The board will be reviewing evaluations for department heads over the next several months, and we'll be working on that. And I would like to say in regards to 705th Street, a considerable amount of that work was done by Barbara Drew out of our office, and she's the one that keeps track of all of the paperwork and also deals with helping me when the issues come up, making sure that I'm available to be able to go out and deal with the issue if there's one on site. Luckily, that project went relatively smooth. They did find an extra slab on 705th Street that ended up in a small change order, but other than that, it went very smooth, and the contractor worked with the city regarding utility hookups and actually removal of those hookups. So at this point, the only burden that's left is for parks maintenance, because they'll be the ones that have to maintain the grass that grows on that site.
Okay, thank you. We're not on public comment yet. I am, if I can get a show of hands just from the audience, because we do have a bigger audience, how many people are here to speak on item 29? Wow. Okay, well, we'll take, we're actually, because our timed item for public comments at 10:35, we're going to go ahead and take item 29 up now. So Supervisor Gitlin, this is your request on the agenda?
Yes, let me pull out my notes, please, and give me a half a moment.
Well, first of all, I want to say this is Resolution 2013-42. It is now a law, so our language reflects it as an assembly bill, so whatever, if we do, board chooses to pass this, it will be, the language will need to be changed, and we'll address that accordingly. This is clearly this resolution of opposition to the transgender law is clearly such an egregious overreach by Sacramento in what I can only term as out-of-control social engineering. If you feel, if a high school student or any K-12 student feels, even though he's born one gender, if he feels, this is up to the minor, this is a child, he's the opposite gender, he's free to use the locker room, he's free to use the facilities, the restrooms of the opposite gender of what is, in fact, his gender. So this is out of control. We're having our, less than 1% of the population of the state is identified as transgender. I just think it's an overreach, and I'm really surprised the governor signed this. So I'd like to have the discussion here on our board and hopefully pass this resolution of opposition before the law will be enacted, which is January 1st, 2014.
Okay, I'm going to open a public comment at this point. If you'd like to speak on this item, come up and limit your comments to three minutes or less and identify yourself for that. Mr. Miles? Karen, you can come up, there's only a couple of people that are here to speak on it, so. Richard, go ahead, you can be first.
I don't know what to say. If I had a child, let's say a male child, who thought he was a girl, I'd still love We live in a society that a number of our people are born with chemical imbalances, or they're born with body parts that don't meet their body. I think it would be sad for Delmar County, Mr. Gitlin's going to disagree with me, to say no to these children, and say, we're not going to love you, because your body says one thing, your mind's telling you something else.
Thank you. Next speaker, Karen.
Karen Sanders, Delmar County. The Delmar County Republican Central Committee unanimously approved the Resolution 2013-1, which is, the Board of Supervisors has used our resolution as a model, and I thank you for bringing this up and putting it on the agenda. This law, what it does is it subjects all California students to unwarranted invasion of privacy, that's kindergarten through 12th grade. And as was said before, it was based on gender identity, not the biological sex of the child. So this child does not have to, any child does not have to identify previously or demonstrate any kind of identification to the other gender on any day. On any day, on any whim, they can go into any intimate school facility. And there is no right to object. There's no provision to guard against privacy, security, concerns of a child that does not want anything to do with this, that is, does not want to share their facility with the opposite biological sex. Schools will have a hard time as well. It is poorly drafted, there's no definitions, no guidance, and no standards for educators. It lacks safeguards and balance, and it eliminates parental involvement. It is a one-size-fits-all. It is wide open to abuse and to lawsuits. It allows a student to be exposed to fully mature students of the opposite sex in their showers, bathrooms, and locker rooms. Bottom line is, do you want your children to be exposed to, in their showers and locker rooms and so forth, from kindergarten through 12th grade? This is a government-mandated exposure or, and elimination of their privacy. There is a case in Colorado that just has come up, and a female at a high school was threatened with hate crimes, charges, when she was complaining about harassment from a boy in her, or actually, there was girls harassing by boys using their bathroom. So currently, there is a petition that is being circulated for signature, and it is a referendum on this law, and it is a law. And if we have, get enough signatures, it puts it on hold, and in this fall, it will go to, before the voters of California, and then we can decide if we want our children and grandchildren to be exposed to this, so that not the legislators nor the government decides the best interest for our children. I've gathered a lot of signatures, and we're talking every walk of life and every political identification. So what I'm hearing is, though, I'm seeing kids, when their parents are signing this, they're cringing because they don't want a coed bathroom or coed showers. And parents are telling me that they're going to take their children out of public school, that's how serious this is. So we have till November 12th to get enough signatures. So I'm asking each one of the supervisors here, as we did with the Delnort Republican Central Committee, for unanimous support of this resolution in opposing enactment of this law in any way, shape, or form. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
I reside in the Fort Dick area of Delnort County. Last Saturday, my grandson Aaron and I hit the petition trail door-to-door gathering signatures, opposing this AB 1266 to send into a group in Sacramento that's organized to oppose it, to get a referendum, put on the ballot. I was amazed at how quickly I'd filled my petitions. I didn't have to drive over two miles from my house to do so. What struck me was the near unanimity of the people I contacted. Those, of those that did not sign, most designated that they were not registered or they had moved, but the preponderance of the people I contacted were eager to sign, sign this In my opinion, AB 1266 is the most egregious overreach by the LGBT agenda to date. Everybody I contacted was just startled over the severity of it, and many of them said they're not going to allow their children to go to school, especially their daughters, to attend public school. They will pull them out, they will homeschool them, whatever it takes. They will not allow their daughters to be subjected to this. And as a parent, I wouldn't either. As a grandparent, I don't. And as a great-grandparent, I don't. This is unbelievable. So I highly recommend that the board go on record as opposing this. I don't think we can allow this for 0.7% of our population to predominate over the vast majority. Our children deserve their privacy. And I think, I think the media seems to have us all, most of us pilloried, in speaking out against this. But this LGBT movement is a monster, and as we can see, it's taking egregious steps. Please, please get a resolution together and send it into Sacramento opposing it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Hi, I'm Brooke Aguilar. I'm a little nervous, I don't do public speaking well. I'd just like to point out that gender dysphoria is a diagnosable condition. Individuals who are transgender face many, 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 gosh, I can't even get the words together, problems in society. There is a lot of discrimination against them, and the bathroom, of all places, is the most terrifying place for a person with gender dysphoria to enter. And I think by refusing to enact this, there may be consequences people aren't aware of. Typically speaking, a child with gender dysphoria who is out and accepted by their family is receiving medical treatment to delay puberty. They don't, you know, they don't, their bodies don't develop until about 16 years of age, when they typically take hormone therapies that match the gender they identify with. And because of this nervousness, this need to fit in that they have, they also pay a lot of attention to their appearance. And I don't know that everyone understands that a child, a transgender child or teenager appears as the gender they identify with. And quite honestly, many of them are very attractive, and many of them are straight, meaning they are attracted to the gender opposite of which they identify with. So I don't know if anyone fully understands that this means that very attractive young men will be forced to use the women's restroom if they are not allowed the right to use the restroom they identify with, and very attractive young women. And also, with the way our politics go in this county, and how conservative this county is, this also opens up the door to macho young men harassing young transgendered women. And that is a hate crime, and it's just not acceptable. Their rights need protected that they may use the facilities they identify with. That's pretty much it.
All right, thank you. Next speaker.
Our sexuality is a good thing. For some people, it is more complicated than it is for others, and I am sensitive to these people and to their needs. I'm, as a recently retired teacher at the high school, I can state that generally, the school counselors and all, every, no, there was no discrimination with gender to students, or no attention was called to this. And amazingly enough, most students are sensitive to this. When we are talking about this situation now with the access to the bathrooms, we have to be aware that this is a Pandora's Box. Number one, I talked to two responsible adult males in this community, who, and I asked them, "When you were in high school, did you think it might have been fun or something to say that you were transgender, so that you could use the girls' room?" They said, "Yeah, that would have been a lark." I can also think of some girls that would like access to the males' bathroom, and they could serve as quite a few in there. I hate to shock you with that language. Okay? It means we are going to have to have bathroom monitors to see what's going on in there. We don't have money for teachers, and we're going to have bathroom monitors. Perhaps, again, we can come up with another situation for these particular students who do have a particular problem, rather than doing a general take where they go into one, have access to one bathroom or the other. Let's come up with another alternate, because, again, I can state that teachers at the high school, and even most students, are very sensitive to these kids. But let's come up with another situation. This is not a fix-it. This opens up more problems than it is even, people are even beginning to think about. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Hello, I'm Steve Godlum, I'm the Assistant Superintendent with the School District. And this is a new law that applies to schools. So the authority in this matter would be the school board. So I just wanted to make that clear. And another thing that I want to make sure that the public knows is that we are going to make sure that the school board is briefed in this, that they are studied in the new law, and we are going to seek out legal counsel to make sure that we are following the appropriate path. And we will, as we're studying this, we will look at the school districts in the state that have already implemented the new law. So be assured that we are not going to take this lightly, and that the school board is going to be apprised, and then we are going to seek our legal counsel and respond accordingly.
Thank you. Any other speakers on item 29 on the agenda? Okay, I will close public comment, bring you back to the board.
Being a teacher and a person who has worked with children for 40 years, I can tell you that I have had children of transgender, and I can also tell you that there is a, they're very, they get bullied and they get outed, and it is heartbreaking. And I believe that this resolution that has been brought forward has inaccuracies in it, and starting with calling it a bill as opposed to a law. And I believe that there has not been ample research into making sure, looking at the 332 words, I think, that are part of the ed code of 221.5, and adding the line on the ed code. And I think that it is partial hysteria, and we have not fully vetted this resolution. So I would move that the Board of Supervisors table Resolution 1213-042 at this time.
And I would have to second that, because without going into it too much, there is a resolution that this board did adopt 10, 12 years ago, that's called the Policy of Community, that says that we would take no action on any item that would affect any other governing body. And since this is clearly under the auspices of the school board, I think that the first appropriate step would be a two-by-two with the school board, take a look at what they're doing. So I would second the motion to table.
Okay, it's been moved to second. Any other comments by supervisors, questions? Supervisor Gitlin?
You know, point of order.
Yeah.
On a, on a tabled motion, according to Rosenberg's procedures that we have adopted, all discussion stops and it moves to a vote.
Okay, I stand corrected. Tony, could you pull the vote, please? This is a motion to table the resolution to a future meeting.
Supervisor Hemingsen?
I'm going to stay.
Supervisor Gitlin?
No.
Supervisor Finnegan?
Yes.
Supervisor McClure?
Yes.
Chair Sullivan?
And I'll move to table at the next meeting as well, so I'll vote in favor of the items that have been, what's that? Move to a future meeting, excuse me, I stand corrected. So we are going to, I think the, the issue with, is the verb, is, it needs to be rewritten, the resolution. So as Supervisor Gitlin pointed out at the very beginning, it needs to be noted as a law, which it got passed as. I personally am not in favor of the law, I think it's very poorly written. I don't, there's just, as it was mentioned earlier, it's a Pandora's Box. So we're going to work on this and rewrite it, and we will meet with the school board because it does go under their jurisdiction. For those of you who got a chance to look through the law, it affects K through 12 in the school districts. So I would encourage you to contact your board members that represent you at the school board. But right now, this has been tabled to a future meeting at this point, so.
It should probably say, this board did weigh in, in the past, when this was a bill, and for opposition, asking it to not go forward, that there was other solutions for this.
Yeah. So. Okay. All right, going on to, we're going to go back to, we're going to take consent agenda item up at this, oh, we have a timed item, I'm sorry, we're going to go to public comment, which is item 24 on the agenda, 10:35, if you're, Richard, go ahead.
I want to thank the county of Delnort for doing something.
Is his microphone on?
Let me explain my thank yous. As a neighbor to the old mortuary or the old planning building, I'm glad to see it tore down. Unfortunately, somebody left a large piece of concrete that still needs to be dealt with, that wasn't dealt with by the contractor, and I hope he'll come back and bust it up, but, you know, because I think it would be too much for our parks crew to handle. I'd like to make a suggestion on that side, and I would hope the Board of Supervisors could come up with some money. It doesn't make too much sense to pay Tony Barnes a lot of money for the Child Support Office, when if we could hire a consultant to find ways to seek state and federal money to build a facility, a county-owned facility on that lot, actually, it's a whole block. Maybe we could build some other, you know, make it three or four stories tall, and add some other county, county facilities there, so the county facilities could be paying rent to the county. But there's something else I'd like to say. I want to thank that nice lady sitting right there, because one of these days, you guys will see an advertisement in the daily triplicate advertising for parents and community members to step forward and serve on the Skateboard Committee. It's time we get parent participation on that committee again, because I'm tired of being the lone turkey on that committee. Also, I want to thank the Board of Supervisor for allowing Jay and Ed Fulton for spending the money for, to fix the ramps. Unfortunately, I kind of disagree with Martha, in that recently, in the pilot, I read how the police chief in Brookings is enforcing their skateboard ordinance. Unfortunately, Bob Black wrote an ordinance that my city signed. Well, guess what, people? My city is ignoring that ordinance. So the damage is being done.
But Chair, I need you to wrap it up.
Okay. The damage is being done by the bicycles that throw their bicycles over the fence and ignore the rules of the skateboard park.
Thank you. Next.
Next, next speaker. A public comment in general, you can speak on, go ahead. Yeah, go ahead, go. It's a public comment.
Okay. My name is Ron Phillips. I am a, live in the county. I work for Royal Human Services and I also run the Crescent City Farmer's Market every Saturday from June first until October. Unfortunately, I didn't find about number twelve on your consent agenda until late Sunday afternoon. And then I had to go back to, as I, by the way, as I brought our new mobile kitchen back from the Latino Net that they held, it's a Health and Human Services for Humboldt County and I had it down there. They were using it to demonstrate healthy eating. And so, I, and then I had to turn around and go right back on Monday to be able to pick up food for today's senior commodity program. So, I didn't get a chance to meet with Gary on this item. And I was reading through it and it mentions down in, it says, "We are fortunate to be able to have this opportunity to continue to work with." And they mention Nutrition Network, Food Policy Council, and Del Norte Unified School District. I'd asked that this be maybe pulled until I can meet with Gary and we can work together on using the mobile kitchen. It would be a shame to have a Ferrari setting in the barn while we run around with an Etzel trying to put a program together that would make it all work. So, I just, if, if that's a possibility, it might be that this has to be done today. But if it's a possibility that it could be tabled until your next meeting, I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Next speaker. Any other public comment? Okay, I am going to close public comment and we have a... Is there, I don't think there's anybody on the list, though. Yeah, it's down there. It's blank. Oh, did he? Okay. Oh, okay, we'll keep public comment open. Next speaker? Yeah, got it.
Missed me, haven't you? I'm Roy Bieber and my wife and I was, had the privilege to attend a Oktoberfest over in, in Jacksonville here a couple of weeks ago. And a young man from Del Norte County was there and he informed us that he was fired from his job because he notified all the Board of Supervisors in Del Norte that maybe some forms were filled out incorrectly and that you'd have to refund the money. And he was, it's a private company he worked for, which does work in Del Norte County. But they were threatened, they wouldn't get any more jobs if he wasn't fired. Now, if this is true or not, if it isn't, I'd like to know, but did you spend any time at all looking into it, if it was a possibility? I know I asked this about the Martinelli case, which got turned down, but we'll, we'll keep that for election time. But I'd just like to know if you spent any time at all looking at this to see if it was true. And by the way, you're all invited to the St. Joe Oktoberfest Saturday night at the Fairgrounds. Thank you.
Thank you. Was there another speaker on the list? Yeah. Susan?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Board members, my name is Susan White. I'm coming to you today to ask you folks to put my dog issue onto your closed session and everything to make a vote within the board. I've lived here for twenty-five years. I am now telling you that I am moving away. I saved my neighborhood by not selling my house to a known drug dealer. I sacrificed the sale of my house and I am moving far away. And my true neighbors that didn't file this hideous thing about myself and my daughter, my neighbors all came together and they signed a petition to have our dogs brought back to us because my dogs did not run at large. My dogs, I was not a breeder, my dogs were service dogs and they were a part of our family. We have no living relatives and because of health issues and we're losing many doctors up here and my health issue has got bad and so has my daughter's, that we are having to move away. We're not moving away because we dislike Del Norte County. I mean, I, I wouldn't be wearing this sweatshirt. I'm a true person that believes in Del Norte County. But it's come time for us to move, to get closer to our medical needs. And what I was asking the board to do is to vote for us, to bring it into private sex, to know that we have your support on getting our dogs back. And I will give the copies of the letters that my neighbors, all my neighbors signed it in our neighborhood to let us, let you guys know that we are not a problem, then also that the dogs were not a problem. And I thank you for your support and have a good day.
Thank you. Any other speakers? Okay, any other public comments? Okay, seeing no public comment, I will close the public comment. And we're gonna go to our time ten forty-five item, which was a presentation by Information Technology within the county, County Department. So, Mr. McCorkle, if you wanna give us an update on where everything's at. Hopefully your tech works too, 'cause that wouldn't be a good premise for the beginning of your presentation.
So this presentation is part of what the board has asked for every department to come forward and basically explain what the department does. We'll go through this pretty quickly. Basically, I think everybody knows that IT department, we fix computers, we install software, reset passwords, manage email and websites, but there's, of course, a lot more that we do. We, a couple of years ago, took over what was called the Central Services Division for the county, it's just the IT department now. But we do design forms and flyers for the county, do a lot of bulk printing. We have folding systems over there, coil a lot of booklets for people. Do a lot of posters, large format printing, posters for various agencies. And large format printing has to do maps and GIS applications. We do business cards for the county, print envelopes, we run a courier service. We do shipping and post-it services still through our office. Relatively recently, we do some vinyl printing now, so we can do those decals for cars. We do a little bit with the county, but we're doing more and more of that and we have scanning equipment over there. Last fiscal year, we had just over a thousand requests for printing services. On the more detailed network side, a lot of people don't know, you know, the rest of the time we spend when we're not out there fixing their computers. We have a lot of servers, about thirty-five network servers we manage. We have wireless networks, which you'll have, I'll have some more information about that. There's approximately a hundred and twenty cell phones in the county. We manage quite a few, only about half of those phones actually are used very frequently. But because we're on a State of California contract, the ones that we don't use can basically sit on the shelf and we don't get charged for them. So I don't wanna, you know, let everybody know. We've gone actually through a couple of audits on our cell phones and both audits have come back that there was no recommendations for any changes. Network security is a big part of what we do. We have a lot of systems that monitor the traffic coming in and out of the county. You'd be surprised about how many notices we get of outside agencies or outside, outside people trying to get into our network. A lot of them come from other countries, but it's a, it's a common thing, we get notices when that happens. Compliance monitoring, there's a lot of different rules that we have to go by and most of them come from Health and Human Services. I look over at Gary. HIPAA regulations, Medi-Cal regulations, there's a lot at the Sheriff's Department that we have to comply with. We have to make sure that our systems meet the regulations or else we can't connect into their systems. Programming used to be the main function of the IT department whenever it was created many, many years ago. We still do a decent amount of programming. We maintain a lot of stuff at the Auditor's Office. And some of the website programming that we can still continue to do, but it's not our main function anymore. Data backups, you would think that those would just run every night and that would be good, but that's not. It's a constant battle that, to verify that our backups are going, to make sure we have multiple backups so we can go to different points in time to retrieve the data. We frequently have to go back to these data backups and pull data off it, so that's actually a pretty big job. I have two staff in my office that are certified tower climbers. They went away to class in Reno, got certified, and I'll have some pictures of that. Over the last year to two years, we've been doing more video security, I'll have some slides on that. Door access controls, we've always done it in this building, we have it in a few other buildings and we're enhancing those features as we go as well. We monitor the temperature in a lot of our server rooms. It's not just about temperature monitoring, but various things that we monitor that we get alerts if things aren't quite right. And we have a GIS system in place and staff dedicated to that. Wireless networks, every time I do a presentation, I think I bring up the wireless networks, but it's pretty important. We, we have twelve county facilities that we connect through wireless connections, basically the towers or antennas on the tops of our buildings. If we were to purchase this type of service from a vendor, say Frontier or Charter, to buy bandwidth or to buy connectivity between our buildings, it usually ranges around six hundred dollars a month, so about seventy-two hundred dollars per month to connect all twelve sites. We've had our wireless systems up and running since before two thousand, so probably about fourteen years now we've had these systems going. Saves the county a lot of money, we manage it ourselves, we're able to upgrade it ourselves and it's basically a self-sustaining system now. We have over a thousand software applications that are loaded on all of the various computer, not every computer has a thousand applications. But when you add them up between all the different departments, there's over a thousand pieces of software that are installed out there. We do have systems out there that monitor that software and when other people install their own software, we get notifications of that as well. So we can see whatever software is installed on county-owned computers. We get about two thousand help desk requests, so we have an electronic help desk system. A lot of the requests we get are automated. If we get a notification of a security issue, that's automated, becomes a help desk request. But county employees also have the ability to submit requests to us electronically and we track those requests. There's four hundred and thirty-eight county-owned computers. There were some that we left off that are part of Health and Human Services that aren't technically, that are on a different network. There's thirty-five servers, there's four hundred, the four hundred telephones are the new telephone system. So we still have a couple of departments that are not on that system yet. So county-wide, there's probably about four hundred and fifty telephones that, that we manage. There's eighty mobile devices that are connected into our email system right now and those are the iPads, iPhones, and Droid phones that we manage. We don't do anything with them other than when they're connected into our system and they're part of an audit. So if something does go wrong, somebody loses one of those devices, we have the ability to go and remotely wipe and delete all the data off those devices. We maintain several connections to the State of California, most of them, actually three of them are at Health and Human Services alone. They, they, they're all to the state, but they're all to little different sections of the state. And we have to follow those policies and make sure our network's in the right order to handle those. Mental health also has connections to the state and of course, law enforcement agencies. July of this year, we received a certification by the State Department of Justice. We wanted to be able to carry their traffic on our network and you have to go through a pretty lengthy certification process. We did it several years ago to just certify the Sheriff's Department. And this, just in July of this year, we got the entire county network certified, meaning we can carry their traffic on the county network. We had to follow their procedures, not, we just can't give it to anybody in the county, but if we follow their procedures, we can have their traffic. It saves us because now the probation department and the DA's office, who also need connection to the Department of Justice, they no longer have to pay for it. I think they were paying approximately twelve thousand dollars per year, each department-wise, for this connection to the Department of Justice and they are not having to do that this year. We also assist some other agencies around the county. A library district, we've done some work with, the Harbor District, the Fairgrounds. We've done a very large Wi-Fi project at the Fairgrounds, providing Wi-Fi to them, part of an OES grant. We work with various fire departments, mainly Crescent Fire, but we've also done some, some work with the other fire departments and we do work out our first five. Tower climbing, like I said, I have two staff that received the certifications. You can see they did, after they received it, they wanted to climb a tower, of course. So they, the city tower behind us, you'll see the photo on the left, it's Calvin at the top of the tower and Alan toward the bottom. They'll argue if Alan was actually on his way back down or if he never made it all the way up. You'll see Calvin at the top in the middle and then Calvin took some photos while he's up there. So we have quite a good panoramic view of the city. Health and Human Services Project. When they did the refresh of their building over at eight-eighty North Crest, they've been in there fifteen, sixteen years. We basically had to, over a long period of time, we had to move all their staff, relocate them. But the last phase of it, we had to relocate over eighty staff and all their computer equipment, printers, everything to do in that building. We had to create a new network at the Fairgrounds where their staff could be relocated to. And we also took the time then to reconfigure their IT room. That IT room really hadn't changed in the fifteen years either, but the technology had. So the room was actually much larger than what we needed, so we took the time to do that. This is, if you see the back room at Health and Human Services, this is where all the employees were. We did not remove the furniture, it wasn't just us doing all this work. We did obviously the computer side of it and there was contracting employees that moved the furniture. Health and Human Services staff, they did a tremendous amount of work as well to move themselves. Had a lot of people involved. But this is where they went. They went to the Fairgrounds, they were relocated there for, I think, approximately three weeks. Everything worked well, we did have to create a network over there. The phone systems that were approved, that basically saved us for this project. It was easy to move their phone systems over to this building here. Health and Human Services maintained all their public access over their main building. So even though public were going there, they could still call over, reach their workers. And even though the phones had moved, the same, extensions were the same and workers were able to receive their calls and there were very few glitches in this process. The server room, you see the, the before picture shows a long room, we started to clear it out, not much of it was used anymore. The after picture, we actually installed a wall and were able to create an office space in there to move the IT staff into this office. It actually freed up cubicle space needed by social services out on their main floor. You can see the before and after and the before is when we started to remove equipment and get rid of stuff we didn't need, it created quite a mess. But it cleaned up nicely, this is basically what controls the operations at eight-eighty North Crest Drive. Video security, we started this a couple of years ago, but now we have twenty-one cameras installed, not counting the, the ones that are in operation, like the juvenile hall and the sheriff, those are separate systems from ours. Video actually is coming in handy, it's been used by local law enforcement in a couple cases and we do plan on enhancing our security around the county. Not just video, but various access control systems and, and alarms that we'll be working on. So this is, we have video security of our server rooms, this is one of our larger server rooms and it's required that we have video security in it to meet some of the state guidelines, not necessarily county ones, but the state guidelines that we have. These are photos of actually a couple that the, that were given to the police. One was here at the Flint Center where a car was stolen and they used our video and they, they used our video to prosecute. The other one was vandalism going around town and it was at a K Street facility and we caught them as well on the video. Actually, in that case, they used our video to actually ID the person and they realized who the person was afterward, they saw our video. Have eight full-time staff, one part-time person. One person located at Health and Human Services, one at the Sheriff's Department and the rest basically work in the Flint Center complex here, complex. When I added up everybody's years of experience, we found out we have about ninety years of county employment between all the staff here. So Alan, he's the Assistant Director for the County, seventeen years of county employment. Basically, he's the go-to guy for most of our projects. He managed the Health and Human Services Project, did a very good job. Basically, as a... Basically has his hands in every project and is really, really good at completing those projects. Carl Allen's been with the county for 16 years. She's stationed over at Health and Human Services, and we used to have two people stationed over there. She's the only one now. There's approximately 100 employees, 120 employees over there. She does a tremendous job. They don't all use the same system. There must be 20 different systems over there, different connections to the state, all different, different contact people. And she just does a tremendous job over there. Rachel Serena is our GIS coordinator. She's been at the county 13 years. Went over these numbers. I was shocked by how many years everybody had been here. Time flies. Rachel does a good job. She does several GIS projects. She's done it with Health and Human Services, TUP. They've done a few projects together. She works with Community Development Department, works with OES to get all their mapping done. Marissa Machado's been here 12 years. He's mainly one of our network specialists. He gets in there and does a lot of the network security and monitoring of the network. A lot of our research for future products, he gets in there and looks to see which systems we should go with or which software applications would work good in our system. Colin Reddy's been here seven years. He again dives into a lot of the network infrastructure, programming routers, likes to create a lot, creates a lot of graphs for me that monitors kind of the use of our internet. We look at traffic coming in and out of the county to see if it's appropriate traffic. Sylvia Ortega's been here two years, although it might seem like she's been here longer. She worked, she volunteered for the county before that and worked through the school system for us, and she's right behind us here running the video system. She does a lot of different activities, not just the video system. She was doing career, we moved her off that. She's doing more computer installs and working with help desk tickets to come in, people that have computer issues. Don Roth has been here two years as well. He's a Systems Support Specialist, works out at the Sheriff's Office. If you haven't seen Don, it's because he works out at the Sheriff's Office. And as soon as you walk through the doors out there, he basically gets attacked by the staff out there and they basically lock him up. He does a tremendous job out there. I like Don because I hear very little from the Sheriff's Department anymore. He does a great job from them, and he works a lot of hours over there, goes in a lot of nights, and I hear very good things about Don's work out there at the Sheriff's Office. Christina Osceguera, I've been practicing that for three days, and she's been working for the county for three days. She's now running our courier service. She's done great in the three days she's been here, and we expect she'll continue to do so. Stuff that we're working on now, we're looking at off-site data centers. So we do have a, basically a data center in the county that we use, that we maintain, but they're hard to maintain. They require a lot of power. They require a lot of cooling. When the cooling doesn't work, it causes us a lot of problems. So the trend now, and what we're looking at, is you can rent data center space. You can rent it from major companies like Amazon or Google, or there's other companies out there as well. The attractiveness of that is they, they can maintain the cooling systems and the power that we need. They sell them to many customers, so we, you know, we expect we'd actually save money by moving to other, to an off-site data center. The only reason we could do it is because bandwidth or broadband to this area is much better than it used to be. It's maybe not quite what we need, but it's getting close. So we're just, we're looking at that, those options before we decide to purchase any more servers or spending more big dollars on those kind of projects. We're looking at maybe doing it off-site. Work at home policies, this I brought up a few times, county departments, it's, in the past, hasn't been typical of county governments to do this, but it is now becoming more typical. We find a lot of examples in schools. We're finding more examples now in California county governments that are researching this. It's not saying we're going to take our whole workforce and have them work at home, but there's a lot of opportunity for specific fields within the county that they might have the opportunity to work at home. It might be a better recruiting policy for the county to get employees out. It might be attractive for that. So we're looking at those policies with the phone systems and the computer systems that we've upgraded recently. It makes that much more feasible. We can actually give connections at home, and you wouldn't know where they were. There wouldn't be a difference. They could access all the data they needed from home. Again, we're looking at facility security systems, revamping the access control systems, better alarm systems and panic systems in our buildings. And also, we always look at, but there are some that are coming down the line, e-services for the public. Video resources, meaning that the video that we do in the building here, we do stream the video. I think when I, before I started this presentation, you had 33 people that were watching it. So you have to imagine 33 more people out here. We'd like to enhance that, either advertise it more. We're testing chat services between it to see if there's ways that we can get the people watching online, if you can see what their input is. You give them a chance to come to this, to the podium here, but we're looking at different systems that, so you can get their, their public input remotely. Access to public data, just different systems, and this isn't necessarily us. I know the Clerk Recorder's Office is looking at systems so people can register or get a lot of their documents online. Personnel is about to do an online application system. They basically set that up all themselves. We've just handled some of the interactions and permits, stuff that I know CDD has wanted, so we're just looking at different applications that we can start putting online for them. Are there any questions?
Any questions, Supervisor. Supervisor McClure and then Supervisor Gittler.
Great job, because we've come a long way since I started with the county and we had DOS computers, and that was, that was about all we had, and so you've done a wonderful job in keeping us up to date. I do have a concern that our microphones are extremely weak in, in the room, and I've had people that will try to watch the program, the Board of Supervisors meeting, and our microphones are not working as well as they should. Back to every time I go home at lunch after a meeting, my husband says, "Your microphones aren't working." So I just want to alert you on that. Thanks. And thanks for the, always, always your IT staff is there to solve problems, and thanks. They're, they're wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor Gittler.
Again, I have absolutely nothing but praise for your department. My iPad, which you provided and helped me program, is my right arm. I just have one question. Do I get to walk up the tower? I'd like to, you know, I'm kind of one of these hands-on guys. Can I get up that tower and take a walk up there? Just kidding. Keep up the good work. Thank you.
Supervisor Finnegan.
Dan, you got something on the consent agenda a little later regarding the donation of 80 LCD computer monitors, and it's only the monitors, so I'm obviously in favor of it, but I'm going to be leaning on you with conversations in the future about programs and also with Gary about whether you call it retrofitting or fixing, taking some of the e-waste and refurbishing it, maybe using Juvenile Hall or some program there, giving kids a trade, and then being able to distribute them to low-income families for educational purposes. So let's, maybe ICRHS in the crowd too, so going to be leaning on you for that, just a heads up.
I like that. Tim and I have some other projects that we're looking at, so I, maybe that would fall in that range as well.
Excellent job.
Supervisor Hemmingson.
Yeah, good job, Dan. All your staff is very accommodating and very responsive. I hate to keep making the head bigger, but nice job.
Yeah, I'll reiterate what the other supervisor said. You guys do a great job, and Supervisor McClure said even more recently, when I got on the board, we weren't televising the meetings. I don't know if a lot of people understand that. That's been, IT departments done that, so people that aren't able to come to the meeting, and also if you've missed the meeting, you can go back and re-watch the video, and Dan's department is the one that got that going. And that's kind of spread to other, I know Solid Waste is filming their meetings now, and it's kind of a ripple effect in City Council as well. So in fact, the city uses a lot of our IT department here for, for their meetings as well. So, good job.
Thank you.
Public comment on IT.
Sheriff Wilson.
I just want to recognize and thank Dan and his, and his crew. You know, we, we've come a long way in 11 years that I've taken office, and a lot of that, we have put a burden on IT, and they have stepped up to the plate numerous times. I cannot say enough about Don Roth and his, his work at our office. Two o'clock in the morning, three o'clock in the morning, when a system crashes, and we call him, he, he responds and comes. He has, you know, volunteered as far as being available to us and has done so on New Year's Eve and on holidays, to be there onsite during the evening hours when he knows that otherwise it would not be available and be hard to cover, when we have such a high demand for the services of dispatch and others, and to make sure that we have IT onsite in case there is a problem. And that kind of dedication and loyalty to not only the organization of the county, but the community as a whole speaks volumes for the personnel and for IT as a whole. We, we went through GIS mapping for the entire community, and that has not only saved hours and time, but also lives in our community, because those of you that used, ever used Google Earth realize that, that the county mapping for Delnor County is not accurate by any means. And so county took that on, IT took it on, and we now have an accurate mapping of our community because of the, not only the dollars we were able to get through grants, but the, but the work and the dedication put in for OES and other services. And without that, we wouldn't be able to do what we are able to do. And I want to thank IT and Dan and all of his personnel, Rachel and Don Roth especially because they've stepped up to the plate. I actually have Wi-Fi in my, in my house, building now, so that's, that is a pleasure. Thank you.
Hey, just to notice this, to dovetail what Sheriff Wilson was also saying, and it did, Brookings got big press here a couple of weeks ago about their OES fully functional center, but IT did that, we did this a couple of years ago over at, off of Washington. That's a fully functional OES center, and it, we were ahead of them on in, in terms of getting that done. So IT had a lot to do with that.
Yes, I just wanted to echo some of the comments from our sheriff. We were especially impressed with our recent moving that we had to do, and essentially they moved 80 people, their workstations, everything they needed to do flawlessly. Services were never disrupted for the thousands of people that we serve every month in Delnor County, and none of it would be possible. I mean, I, when I first started with the county, the first computer we had over at Mental Health was one of those Radio Shack computers. So we've, we've come a very long way, and the systems are constantly being upgraded at the state and federal level. There's always an expectation that we're going to keep up, and Dan and his crew are there to help us do that. Privacy is critical in these systems, and Dan has been very helpful to guarantee and assure us that we have all the necessary privacies in place and protocols, and we really appreciate that. Carl Allen, our staff person, or his staff person that's over at our shops, this is kind of like ours, is just really a phenomenal person, very patient. I don't know about you, but when we have an IT issue, it's like a big emergency. But she's very calm, she handles things well, and it all gets done. So I just want to express our appreciation to Dan and his crew. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, at this point, I'm going to close public comment on IT, but I will entertain a motion to accept the budget transfers before we go on to our hearing.
Don't move.
And that's item 16, 17, 18, 19, 20, 21, 22, 23. It's been moved in second, and budget transfer 10-01, 10-02, 10-04, 10-06, 10-07, 10-08, 10-09, 10-10. Okay, that's been moved in second. Any public comment on budget transfers, which are items 16 through 23 in the agenda? Okay, seeing no public comment, I will bring it back to the board, and Tony, could you please pull the vote?
Supervisor Hemmingson?
Why, they said Hemmingson? Yes.
I did too.
Oh, you did? I thought you said Finnegan. I'm sorry.
It was Finningson.
Supervisor Gittler.
I don't want to go there.
The IT was getting in my way. Did you call my name? That'd be yes.
Supervisor McClure?
Yes.
Supervisor Finnegan?
Yes, again.
Chair Sullivan?
And I'll say yes also. Yeah.
Yes, and all yes. Okay, so that's, okay, so now at this point, we are going to go to item 26 in the agenda, which was a timed item. Conduct a public hearing to provide the public an opportunity to hear and comment on the result of following grant activities. One, a study aimed at the feasibility analysis of a culinary arts training facility in Delnor County. Culinary arts study conducted by Rural Human Services. Two, a study aimed at the feasibility analysis of an ethanol production facility in Delnor County. Bioenergy study conducted by Clean Vantage LLC. Three, an assessment of improvements necessary for compliance with Americans with Disabilities Act at Smith River Community Hall, ADA improvements, conducted by Smith River Community Service District, and accept the final products produced through this grant as meeting the requirements of the grant and various agreements between the county and consultant sub-receipients performing the work as requested by the county administrative officer. So I, at this point, we are going to, we're going to open the public hearing. Jim, if you want to.
Good morning. This is the final three public hearings that are required by the Community Development Block Grant Program. When they provide grants to the county, we're required to have public hearings. This final one is a public hearing to look at the results of what we did with the grant funds. And as you mentioned, we have three separate projects that were involved in this planning and technical assistance grant. So we're going to end up with three very short presentations, I hope, to discuss these, and then we'll have a public comment. The first presentation is Tim Hune with Rural Human Services. The second presentation will be Dr. Keith Thompson from Clear Vantage LLC. And the, the final presentation will be by Travis Schneider of Pacificus Filialts, who did the ADA improvement study out at Smith River. So any questions?
So a couple of questions. First question, they, they have told you there'll be less than 10 minutes, right, on each presentation?
We want to have 10-minute presentations, yes.
Okay. No, it's 10. And because we have to allow time for public comment on it, so do the presenters need to be sworn in, or not?
No.
Okay, so let's go ahead and start with Mr. Hune.
Thank you. Good morning, Supervisors, Chair Sullivan, members of the public. You know, I'm Tim Hune, Director of Workforce Center Programs at Rural Human Services, also representing RHS as Executive Director, Mike Costigan, and I think we have some board members here, Scott Fowler and Ron Sandler. As Jim Carnegie mentioned, RHS received a CDGB planning and technical assistance grant to determine, is there a need for a culinary arts facility that serves the entire community? How would it operate, and where should it be located? We have two consultants who did in-depth studies to answer these questions, and I am pleased to have them both here today, one on the phone and one in person. And as we go through the presentation, please note that the PowerPoint has a lot of words in it that you can read later, but I invite you just to listen now and hear the summaries of the feasibility studies. With that, I'll introduce Patty Krupenar, Associate Architect and Sustainability Coordinator with Inova Nexus Architects in Sacramento. Also want to mention and recognize Patty as a graduate of Delnor High School. Patty Krupenar.
Thanks, Tim. Good morning.
Welcome back.
We had planned 15 minutes, so we will try to go much faster.
15, okay.
Okay, so I am a graduate, worked with Inova Nexus for about 16 years, and we do mainly institutional civic and educational projects, planning and design, and we're lucky enough to have with us Lou Cooper's House of Food Spectrum. He's a nationally known food business incubator and food business consultant. So Lou, go ahead and start.
Can you hear us, Lou?
Yeah. If you want to, you want to talk to your, to have a line that's in the video?
Yes.
Right here with I've been talking. About food business incubation. Well, good morning, everybody. I am proud to be part of this team to really look at this opportunity, which we think is quite significant, and Delnor County, they could actually have a much broader reach. When we took on this project, we realized that there are two goals, business incubation and culinary arts training, and in fact, they both can be integrated quite well in this program. For the slide about business incubation, just to say that business incubators exist globally. There's about 7,000 worldwide. It's an asset incubation association.
Sorry to cut you off here for a second. The feedback is horrible on this thing. Is there any way we can get any clarification on it? This is a great follow-up to the IT presentation. Okay, let's see if that.
Is this a little better now?
Yeah. Sounds better, Lou.
Thank you. So there's many incubators around the world, and each one is quite unique to meet the needs of. needs of the community, but we're all focused on wealth creation, job creation, entrepreneurship development, and so forth. On the next slide, Tim, the MBIA identifies best practices, like we're doing today, creating consensus on a mission, developing a strategic plan, quantifiable objectives, effective board advisors or directors, and most importantly stressing service to meet the needs of the community and result in economic success, job creation, training, and so forth. Next slide. In our study, we actually profiled, as you'll see there on the left-hand side, it's a number of different incubation models around the globe, particularly in the U.S., as well as a number of programs that are culinary training-based, to look at best practices and see how we can integrate them and learn from them to see what makes the most sense in Delnor County. We're going to focus on the first one on the top left, the Rutgers Center. And if we could slip the next slide. The Rutgers Food Innovation Center is one, it's actually a program I personally developed from the ground up, so it's one that I could talk about as a very relevant example. This program was in Southern New Jersey. New Jersey, you may think is a very urban area, which it is, but Bridgeton is actually a very rural community in Southern New Jersey, in the High Cultural Center, and also in a second poorest community in New Jersey, number two of five sixty-six, second only to Camden in per capita, per capita income. But this facility serviced over a thousand clients, borrowing over twelve million dollars in grants with a debt-free facility, and really was recognized, as you'll see there, by the MBIA as the Incubator of the Year, and received a number of other recognition as well. If you go to the next slide, Tim, slide eight, you'll see the facility that we designed there, which has some things that are relevant to what we're talking today about for Delnor County. On the bottom right, in the gold color, you'll see a variety of service areas, from product development capabilities, consumer research and sensory analysis, analytical testing, and also disaffirmative education. We also had equipment that was shared throughout Southern New Jersey sites as a way to bring in other communities. But also, there's a shared use processing area where entrepreneurs, businesses established, that fully equipped facility for doing produce, or salsa, jams, or jellies, and so forth. On the next slide, Tim, you actually see some illustrations of the facility. So for example, the bottom right, you'll see a six-burger stove, and the top left, you'll see a hundred-gallon kettle. So literally, an entrepreneur could take their business from the stove top to some significant production capacity, and that's really what this facility is all designed around. And you see the sanitary finish, and this is really designed to be an FDA, USDA, and the medical facility. In this particular case, again, all models are different, but you can see some examples of the capability that it had. The next slide, slide ten, it really illustrates the great success, and again, we had over a thousand clients, everything from brand-new products, doing value-added asparagus, functional coffees, peach cider from second-grade cold peaches, helping over two dozen clients get grants from the USDA Rural Development Program, and also working with groups like the Food Bank, where we developed revenue-generating programs for the donated bagels in this example, for product to them as well. Our next slide, this is another example of a particular client. Similarly, as we were on the East Coast and you're on the West, we really service to really attract international companies to come to New Jersey simply because of our incubation program. In this case, a company called Schar, is the world's largest food and tree company based in Italy. We helped them from the engineering to the market research, the food technology, the quarter insurance program, and personally hired their U.S. Operations Director, VP. But the real story is that the company was successful. We helped them understand the U.S. marketplace, then they graduated into their own facility, fifty-two thousand square feet, sixteen million dollar cost in a neighboring community. Again, a business incubator can really be quite the catalyst for economic development, and this became a strong state story for our governor. Next slide shows you the kind of funding that's really critical in the ideal food incubation program, that's derived from federal, state, and community partners, from the parent organization, Archaeic University, Department of Ag, USDA, the state, other state commissions and agencies, and the city and community. Again, every program is different, but having a federal, state, community partnership is really critical. Our next slide really talks to you, talks to us about how integrating the culinary training program provides great synergy, has a lot of overlap with some of the competencies of the incubation facility. Again, as you look at the various best practices, the range of servicing, both schools, providing camps for teens and adults, people looking for, you know, disexperiences, food science programs, colonology, some have all-night restaurants, and there's a lot of different models out there. For the next slide, if we were going to see what made sense for Delnor County, in the Food Innovation Training Center, which we kind of came up with our own acronym here called the FIT Center, F-I-T. Next slide, slide fifteen, we recognize there's a lot of challenges in the county, similar to what I had in New Jersey, rural community declining population, low attainment of college education, and so forth. But if you look at the bottom of that slide, we really feel strongly that this integrated incubation program and training facility can make a significant impact to improve both the educational attainment and the economic impact to the community, dramatically enhancing the median household income levels, reducing the percent of population living in poverty. So as we kind of take it down to the user level, next slide, the food and ag business industry, you know, really suffers from a tremendous thirst for information on all the things, you know, all the things they don't know, about marketing, capital, regulations, permits, product development, creating a value-added, differentiated product that people want to purchase, great costs associated with getting a product developed, or safety and legal issues, and training in a variety of areas. Next slide. So we came up with a kind of a working mission, what we thought that the FIT Center could do. And I actually, the word FIT is quite relevant because there could be quite of an association with how we can help the community become more fit and actually be trained in healthy education, and would help combat obesity. But the mission that came up was to nurture, support, and sustain the food and ag industry in the county, but also impact the region from San Francisco to Portland. So just like my Senator Rutgers serves the entire state, wasn't really fixed in on its four walls, we see similarly that this program in Delnor County can really have an impact throughout this entire region. On the next slide, really talks to how diversification is key. You see that the constituents of this program, ranging from the entire vertical, if you will, of the food chain, from farmers and ag co-ops to when they get into value-added businesses, or startups, or existing companies. Retail establish was one of my local, local community agencies that want to really provide some benefits, like healthy meals for local residents, and of course, students who could gain from experiential learning opportunities, and even down to the grade level, grade school level, they can learn about diet and relationship with disease. Next slide. You see there's a tremendous array of services that will be provided as well for all of the needs that this community requires. As I mentioned, access to capital, customers, marketing, and so forth, and again, with number twenty-five there, this really has an impact on the community, perhaps providing benefits at farm-to-school initiatives, community farmers' markets, co-ops, meals on wheels, displaced worker training, just a number of opportunities that this center can provide as well. Which are best listed on the next slide, slide twenty. What we're really creating here through this program is a cluster. Cluster is the big buzzword, you know, frankly, in government, but it's really where, at the center of that diagram, in the green area, we're really bringing together this community that, you know, otherwise would not have a venue to bring them together. We're helping farmers sell direct to retailers, helping farmers to work with each other, helping farmers to work with established food companies, and vice versa. In the middle of it all, are students who can gain experiential learning and benefit as well. We're surrounding this group with school programs in Delnor County and throughout the Northern California region, trade associations, service providers, federal, state, community agencies that might have grants, could be groups like SBDC, that might have resources we can work with, want to bring in venture capital, and really help folks with business mentors as well. So next slide, as we designed this facility, and Patty and I had a lot of discussions about what should this facility have as components to really enable it to have these kinds of services. We really identified four kind of, you know, functional areas, education, training, conference, community meeting space, we thought was critical. An area for food service preparation, product development in the kitchen, to really help folks at the benchtop level. Administrative space for the team that'll be operating this program, as well as needs that our clients might have, additional space. And very importantly, the food incubation area, made up of the various types of programs that are required. As you see on the bottom of the slide, the food incubation area enables design, development, analysis, integration, and sale of products at this facility, the first one, actually manufacturing products for sale to the public. This facility is definitely FDA and USDA inspected potentially. We really measure our success, you know, our P&L is really based on impact. So we're talking at the end of the day about creating new businesses, keeping existing businesses in business, new jobs, direct and indirect, high revenue, funding, partnerships, experiential learning, training, higher college attainment. Our goal is to create, you know, the kind of systems in place to really measure these various benefits. With that as a background, let me turn this over to Patty, who really got into how do we take some of these components and really look at the optimal size and how that could be laid out.
Okay, we'll take a real quick look at the site analysis then. Go ahead to the next slide. So based on the facility requirements that Lou just described, we realized that the optimum size of this facility that the county could support would be about eighteen thousand square feet. So we took that and then looked at, go ahead, some locations for it. We looked at a range of criteria that you can see there, and one thing really came to the fore, which was the importance of the potential educational partners to be able to use this facility during a regular class schedule. So one site really rose to the top really quickly. And go ahead. And that is a location that's just on the southwest corner of the high school property, and it has easy access and easy to find from the highway. It's also within walking distance of a bell schedule for five educational entities that surround it, Best Maxwell, the high school, College of the Redwoods, Charter School, Two Trees as well. And go ahead to the next one, and a little bit closer look. There are also some shared site opportunities here that we discussed with Superintendent Olson. I don't know if you can see the pointer, there's the high school arboretum, little triangular area just to the north of the site, which is here in red, and then to the side, the Charter School, which has additional parking that could also be shared. So we looked, again, at these criteria, and just go ahead to the next slide. We came up with two options for a potential layout, and really, the purpose of these options was just to see, yes, we can fit the building program on the site with the parking that we discussed with the county that would be required for this facility. And so these are not design decisions, but they're just a way to start a dialogue about what the facility could be like and what it could include. So the yellow area is a food incubation portion, the green, light green is reception administration, and then the blue is the educational component. We have great solar access on the south and near Best Maxwell that we could potentially do an outdoor.
That's actually the only flaw I've seen in the presentation. You have a big sun in Delnor County, and that's just, is not a comment. It's, yeah.
When the day they use up here.
Yeah, okay.
Good solar access on the south, where we could do seasonal outdoor dining, as well as an organic garden. And then the orange is pedestrian access from, you know, all the educational facilities and the neighboring uses, you know, potential partners as well, and the opportunity for shared parking if needed. And then the next option shows the facility closer to Eldorado Street, parking on the south, sharing that entry with potential outdoor patio dining when it's not raining, and service access on the back that could use the Castle Rock exit if needed, or back on an Eldorado Street. And in this example, we took the organic garden and put it in the interior of the building, you know, for kind of a warmer environment, tomatoes, things like that. It's more like a greenhouse atrium. So those are just some ideas about how the site could be used for that facility, and next, and potentially what it might look like, just as a discussion point. Tim? Thank you.
Thank you.
Just very briefly, I'll just describe next steps and invite any questions, or we're going to have questions at the end, Mike?
Yeah.
Okay. So great, you know, we, what's next? You know, we've learned that there's considerable interest in the culinary facility from public and private partners. We've identified an ideal location, that the next steps will be in-depth meetings with potential partners, getting down to brass tacks, determining, for instance, with the schools, okay, you say you want to have, you could have students there, how many students, how many classes, how many teachers would you have there? Same thing with potential incubator clients, you know, which farmers, market vendors, what small businesses would be interested? And then also meetings with potential funders to determine their level of interest, both in funding the next step and project on the line, as well as community meetings to make sure we didn't overlook anyone. Then we would have a real detailed, realistic plan of business operation that we could bring to potential funders, and then later move on to, we call that Phase Two. Phase Three would be the design of the community-supported facility. At that point, we would know, have firmly identified the exact amount of community So while, did you say questions at the end?
Yeah, we're going to do questions right after you get done with your presentation.
All right, well, we'll pay it in, Lou, you're here. Are there any questions?
Okay, questions from Supervisor, Supervisor Gitlin.
I do have a question. Tim, an excellent presentation. I went through it quickly, and I was looking for it, is there a plan to use any existing infrastructure, vacant restaurants, I can think of a couple of examples in our community to use this program? And the second part of that question is, how many students are we talking about being part of this program initially?
So to answer the first one, we initially looked at existing structures, such as the cultural center, people were suggesting restaurants, you know, Old Glenn's Bakery, and really those, aside from being in the tsunami zone, which was sort of a deal-breaker, the facilities just weren't large enough when we're looking at the community need.
Well, that's what I was referring to, is Glenn's Bakery, which has the infrastructure there. I do know it needs some updating, but it sits there day after week after month after year vacant, and I'm just wondering if this program can incorporate the infrastructure that's already there, so it's a fucking classroom.
That'd be a good thing to look into.
Would you? Does the program be part of that, looking into that?
Yeah, but as far as getting funding to build in the tsunami zone, pretty difficult proposition, but, you know, worth looking into.
How many square feet? Tim, how many square feet is your footprint?
Uh.
Building, under the roof?
Building under the roof?
About eighteen thousand.
Eighteen thousand square feet.
Glenn's Bakery was the, that.
But to answer your second question about number of students, so there's a hundred and fifty students at Castle Rock, there's nine hundred and eighty at the high school, another two hundred something at the elementary school, and, you know, there's anywhere between twenty and eighty students at the alternative programs, the county office event.
Yeah, and I'm not, I'm hearing Supervisor Finnegan saying, I'm not expecting a hundred and fifty at one roof, but I realize that you have, you branch off and you specialize and you take fifteen or eighteen students in a particular program.
That's a good point. Maybe that's where businesses are going to graduate to, to Glenn's Bakery. Yeah, yeah, good point.
Any other questions from Supervisor, Supervisor McClure?
I just want to make a public statement, that this has been a dream project of mine for years and years and years, and I think that we are going to be able to receive, that we're going to be able to attract stakeholders to this with the plan of the entrepreneurial side, of people being able to bring from farm to table and take their goods to market. I think that also, my dream plan has been that Napa County, years ago, the wineries there decided, we need to upgrade our there decided, we need to upgrade our food service. And how they did that is they started bringing in world-renowned chefs, and the next thing you know is that you have Napa as a world-class food center. And we have that kind of facility, we have that kind of potential when we start training the young minds that we have here and the people that are great chefs here that get some formal education on how to run the front half of the, the front half of the, the restaurant and the back half. And the next thing you know, we're going to be able to assist people in having successful business startups or assist them in having a skill that they, if they want to go somewhere else, they can. So I am so excited about this because I think that the whole movement about being healthy and the whole movement about being able to sustain ourselves as a community, this fits right into it and I'm glad that the name is fit also. Thanks.
Any other questions Supervisors? Okay, thanks, Tim.
Thank you.
At this point, we're gonna take a three-minute recess and we'll be right back because I'm sure the presentations won't be ten also.
Are we gonna ask for a little cover?
Yeah.
It's a long-term sustainable source and you have a skilled educated workforce readily available. If you look at a wood pellet plant, similar kinds of technological strengths, it tends to focus on woody materials as opposed to being more broadly focused on an array of biomass types, very simple technologies, moderate energy density, it's a solid fuel product in the form of pellets. There's a very large market for fuel pellets in Canada, in Europe, a slowly developing market for those products in the United States, but it shares a common technological weakness in that it's a combustion technology and as a consequence in many areas, they are strongly discouraged for a variety of reasons, some of which are rational and some of which are perhaps not. Location, again, distance to market, single largest impediment to a pellet plant, lack of transportation infrastructure, and most of the woody waste that's available is from federal lands, so long-term supplies are difficult to forecast. There's a current move for doing fuel reduction in federal forest lands, but the federal commitment and ability to contract for long-term supply contracts is extremely limited, typically no more than five years, which makes writing a commercial facility and getting commercial paper, that is financing for a facility, extremely difficult. The third alternative was to look at the feasibility of doing anaerobic digestion. It has technological strength that it can take all types of biomass. It tends to favor readily degradable organic materials, food waste, the organic fraction of MSW, sewage sludge, those kinds of things. However, with some of the emerging pretreatment technologies, you can do AD on woody wastes as well. And they're very robust, well documented, well demonstrated technologies, low carbon footprint. There are a variety of production incentives in California for green fuel and power, and it would probably qualify for carbon credits and the carbon trading market. Technologically, biogas requires dewatering and cleaning in order to be used for pipeline or compressed natural gas, liquid natural gas use, so that's an additional cost beyond simply burning the gas for energy. It benefits particularly, as I mentioned, the woody material from pretreatment, either a wet oxidation or an acid-based hydrolysis. Locationally, you have a large, relatively large amount of readily degradable feedstocks, sufficient to feed a facility easily in the half megawatt to megawatt and a half facility size. The cost of biomass, again, moderate. The relative location weaknesses of any facility, and this includes AD, is the lack of existing natural gas pipelines, which means your natural gas appetite or supply demand here is relatively low, with the exception of a distribution network in the downtown. You have a relatively small population, so local demand for CNG LNG products would probably not be very high. Even if you considered conversion of your entire municipal county fleets to LNG and CNG, you would probably not be able to utilize all of it that you could produce, which would require the installation of generation capacity. And there are a number of options available to look at for that. Your estimated biogas yield, as I said, looking at primarily animal manures, MSW organics, biosolids, and then smaller amounts of the woody material, gives you a facility that's, I think, relatively easily in the half megawatt to megawatt and a half size. The advantage from an energy production standpoint is the production of power at the end of the distribution grid, and Pacific Power would benefit in terms of improved power quality and in terms of being able to have local dispatchable power for emergencies should the supply be disrupted due to severe winter storms or other natural events. A conceptual design of an AD system typically will look like this, whether it's what's considered a wet system, which typically runs in the 10% solids range, or a dry system, which would be in the 25% to 30% solid range. They have very similar kinds of design features. The advantage of the high liquids is the ability to shorten the digestive retention time, so your capital costs are proportionately smaller. You're looking at with a wet AD, a facility in approximately the $12 million range, and that's a mega, megawatt and a half of production capacity. With pretreatment, you would increase that to about 15 million, but when you look at your break even tipping fee that you would be required to charge in order to have this facility operate without subsidy, it changes from the mid $70 a ton to around $55 to $60 a ton. The advantage to this is, of course, that you can divert a significant amount of your organic waste that's currently going to landfill from landfill, helping you meet your county diversion mandates and producing a sustainable source of green power for decades to come. In addition, if you include pretreatment, the amount of biosolids you will produce will be reduced as your conversion efficiency is considerably higher with pretreatment included as opposed to a standard traditional plant. Some of the major benefits of this kind of facility would be the creation of new jobs in the county, production of biogas that can be converted either into electricity to power the wastewater treatment plant with the city of Crescent City, or for other municipal uses, and an opportunity for spinoff companies related to the production of... The solids from this are actually Class A, very clean, suitable for use in non-food chain agriculture. The liquid typically are used for land application to grow and improve soils. And the improved treatment of waste materials through your wastewater treatment plant, this oxidative pretreatment and acid-based hydrolysis are very good at removing to almost non-detect level certain emerging constituents of concern, things like estrogen-mimetic compounds, pharmaceuticals that are disposed of by people flushing them down the drain, that kind of thing. And it's a very effective way of improving the affluent quality of your wastewater treatment plant. In addition, your long-term feedstock supply contracts, if you focus on readily degradable organics, is much improved over the woody wastes and will certainly reduce the amount of material going to landfill. And with that, I made it as quick as I could.
Okay, questions from supervisors? Yeah, Supervisor Gatlin.
Right after I took my oath of office, this was a subject of great concern, biomass projects. I went down to Eureka and I met a gentleman by the name of Bob Martin, I don't know if you know who he is.
He used to be the Solid Waste Director at Metro.
Okay, Fairhaven Power, and they have an ongoing, very successful biomass project. And I asked him a rhetorical question, why can't we have something like that in Del Norte County? And I also have learned that Trinity County also has an active biomass project. Former Supervisor Roger Yegel gave me a little tour of that in April. So this is overdue. I know we've had this discussion before, a gentleman by the name of Aaron Valley made a presentation as part of Tri-Agency. Unfortunately, Tri-Agency's status is a little not on solid ground right now. So I'm glad to hear that we're moving forward on this and new employment, plus the fact that the forest needs to be cull down and this is fuel, and I don't see that there's another side to this. This is all win-win, so I want to encourage you, keep it up, and I support it.
Supervisor Hemmingson.
I was just curious, 50 to 75 high-paying jobs, what's the criteria for a high-paying job?
High-paying jobs are typically, will you consider them, anything that pays above $20 an hour?
And why would they be high-paying? Is that because it's highly technical, highly skilled?
It's because they're, yeah, they're high-skilled, high-trained positions, they're technicians, service technicians, pump technicians, engineers, operators, those kinds of things. And $20 an hour is usually the bottom and entry-level type salary. They go considerably up from there. Engineers would typically be in the $40 to $70 an hour range. And a facility usually of this type will usually have two engineers.
Great, thank you. Supervisor McClure.
Yes, I have a couple of questions in relationship to funding. And what kind of company is, is there enough kilowatt production that a company would be interested in putting in the $12 million plant?
Generally, these kinds of facilities, there's two methods of financing that are used. One is all municipal-owned. That's usually done with either a combination of federal and state grant money for improving wastewater treatment efficiency, upgrading plants, that kind of thing. EPA has grants available for these kinds of projects under the Clean Water Act. There are private sector companies that specialize in developing these kinds of facilities. You would have to do a more detailed, in-depth analysis, obviously, than we were able to do with the limited grant monies that was available for this, but there are firms that do that. I actually do work with the Energy Trust of Oregon and do third-party engineering review for all biopower projects that come forward for PG and EN, Pacific Power in the state of Oregon. There are a number of these joint public-private ventures that have come forward. There's one currently in Portland, out at the wastewater treatment center out on Columbia Boulevard, Columbia Biogas, that's entirely privately funded with a municipal underwriting of the bond, but it's a much, much larger facility than this. In the megawatt, megawatt and a half, you're at a size that there's actually a pretty decent appetite, and that appetite exists in communities that do not have the carbon trading opportunity that California has put in place. With the emergence, the carbon trading marketplace that's now active in Sacramento, it will make this kind of facility, I think, much more attractive for private companies to develop.
Supervisor Finnegan.
Yeah, thanks for the presentation, something that we, I mean, I sit on Tri-Agency and have for some time, and we authorized the study of the woody biomass and whatnot, but even way before that, through the Regional Council of rural counties, we studied this and encouraged this, and whether it's in Lassen County or Trinity County or Humboldt County. The problem, I think, is tied to, which never made sense to me, is that the product wasn't there and that it was too far to get to market. And a lot of it is because of the vast majority of our woods, if you will, are tied up with federal government. It's interesting to see that, you know, we don't get any credits. And the other part of that is, is no, we don't get the carbon credits off federal land. But, yeah, the discussion of reusing the carbon footprint, of the air quality, I mean, we've been involved in this for some time, so it's nice to finally get a report on it.
Well, and that's one of the reasons that in looking at this report, we focused on non-forest biomass. I mean, there is a small amount of forest biomass that would be utilized at a megawatt and a half capacity. If you were to utilize the totality of all the biomass that was available, you are looking at a facility that's more likely in the range of about 20 to 25 megawatts. And the reason we didn't look at that is specifically the issues you bring up, and one is the lack of ability to take credit for the carbon off federal land, but the other is the inability of the federal government to enter into long-term contracts, which makes the capital markets extremely reluctant to get involved in projects that utilize large amounts of waste coming off federal lands.
Any other questions from supervisors?
I spent two days in Utah, or just recently, talking about lands issues, and one of the issues was exactly what we're talking about now, and that is the ability for counties to utilize and to thin and reduce the fuel on the ground that is within the counties that exists on federal lands. And that is because the federal lands have, in their plan, their land management plan, a fire reduction or fuel load reduction plan. And like Apache County has done, they, the county, has taken the initiative to thin the forest to that plan, because those plans have already passed all the federal and state regulations in order to be implemented. And in doing so, not only were they able to increase jobs in the wood products, because they're taking trees, thinning the trees out of the forests, and those are being sold to contractors that employ people to put to work, but then the county would go in and thin the remaining brush and bush out of that area, and that was being utilized in exactly what we're talking about in these types of facilities. And in Apache County, where they started this, much of that was picked up for free and just hauled away for free. But then the lumber company came in and put one of those power plants into their mill, much like Simonson did many years ago. And in doing so, then the county started receiving revenue for that biomass that was being then hauled right into the Apache County mills. So it is doable, and the Apache County model has been identified by the Department of Interior as a model to be replicated in other counties. So this has already been an accepted model and can be utilized in counties all across the country. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment on this presentation? Okay, I'm going to close public comment on that. Thank you for your presentation. Okay, we have one more presentation for the CDBG funding. It is the Assessment of Improvements Necessary for Compliance with ADA at Smith River Community Hall. And Myron, I saw him earlier today, or?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Travis Schneider, Pacific Affiliates. As you mentioned, we were commissioned through the Del Norte County, through a community development block grant, to conduct a study on the potential for accessibility upgrades at the Smith River Community Hall. And as part of that, we went through, we identified not only the feasibility, but also some of the constraints related to that, and of course, the history of the hall. So as I mentioned, the purpose was to assess the ability to bring the current hall into compliance with current accessibility standards. The primary focus was to increase accessibility to persons with disabilities and to make upgrades to the facility based upon the recommendations of this report. For some of you, you may already know that the Smith River Community Hall has been there for quite some time. It's about 9,000 square feet, has been there since 1920. Presently acts as the offices of the Smith River Community Services District, as well as there is a rentable space as well, in addition to the community hall itself, which serves a number of different purposes, including a community gathering place. Presently, the Smith River Community Hall is not listed on any national or a California registry as being a historical structure, despite being of age to qualify. Being on that list would certainly afford it some opportunities as far as being able to circumvent compliance requirements in terms of meeting current standards. At the same time, it would also require a number of hurdles to be, you know, overcome anytime any improvements were desired for the specific structure. Once again, just highlight right there the considerations we went through. We looked very closely at not only the site, but as well as vehicular access, the structure, including storm drainage, the roof, framing floors, foundation, the fire suppression system, seismic and lateral loading, the existing kitchen within there, and we came up with a complete list of improvements based upon our entire assessment. We prioritized those improvements or desired improvements based upon immediate need and categorized them into three different categories, priority one, priority two, and priority three, and developed a budget for improvements to the facility. And bear in mind, I'm going through this relatively quickly, because I know that we are on a time constraint, but we outlined most all those items relatively closely and in a great deal of detail in the report itself, which I believe you guys have been provided the nearly complete version, and we'll get to why it hasn't been completed later on. So with that, the total budget was going to be somewhere near $70,000 to $80,000 based upon the improvements that we projected for the facility, assuming that we went with the current structure and did not place it on a California historical code or a national registry. Once again, we outlined life and safety, priority number one, most notably ingress/egress doors, illumination of signs, venting, new landings, new ramps, and grading to the outside as it requires railings as well as parking spaces. Priority two, the accessibility, reconfiguring bathrooms, increasing door widths, resurfacing the exterior area to meet great compliance for the purposes of installing an accessible parking space, or two, in this particular case, given the occupant load for the specific structure. And then three, some of the lesser desired items or lower priority items, most notably increasing accessibility of the kitchen for the purposes of using it for public events that would necessitate accessibility. As part of this study, we were commissioned to do an income survey of the area, and what precipitated the income survey was, in order to become eligible for a number of these grants, it's predicated on the population meeting a certain income threshold. Unfortunately, Smith River, based upon tax return and census data, did not qualify for the threshold at which we would become eligible for a number of these grants. That would be 51% or greater of the population below the median income level. Median income level is based solely on your income and the number of persons within that household. They did not have necessarily be blood relatives, siblings, just people within the household itself. So we conducted a door-to-door survey based upon the number of people within the rate pain area, which in this particular case was about 583 people in the Smith River Community Services District sphere of influence, which necessitated us going to over 250 homes or residences as part of this. The survey was conducted on two days by two different individuals. We had one Spanish-speaking individual, which also assisted with the survey. One of the days in which the survey was conducted was on the weekends. Remarkably, there is an incredible amount of poverty in this area, which not only, we were surprised at the level at which the income survey came back. In short, 76.7% of the population serviced by the district are at or below the adjusted median, and this is based, of course, upon our survey. So this survey as a whole is not only going to be valuable to the district for the purposes of seeking grant funding or funding to improve the facilities that they own, but it's also going to be invaluable to the county for the purposes of improving some of the facilities that they own as well. I do know that some projects sometime back were put on hold because of funding that the county was unable to qualify for because of this reason. So in that regard, it will certainly be invaluable. Lastly, we're, the purpose of the survey was, or the final element of the survey was to identify funding sources. Unfortunately, with the federal government shutdown, we were limited to the sources or the websites available to us that we normally rely upon for this particular service. And so as a result, the government programs have not all come back online as of yet, as of yesterday, but we have identified the two primary ones, the community development block grants, which is what funded this particular project, and the USDA community facility grants, okay? A lot of these are based upon use, demographics of those being served, and there's a myriad of other items that go into what each one of these grants is, you know, for. Additionally, we've got private funding, Bank of America Foundation, Ben Chaney Foundation, Home Depot, and each one of these is very different in nature. Home Depot, for example, provides grants or vouchers, so to speak, for materials to be purchased from their stores. So that just provides you with an idea of the diversity of these particular programs. So lastly, as I mentioned, timeline, at this juncture, we're still waiting for all of the federal stuff to come back online, at which time we'll reconvene with the district as well as Jim Carnegie here at the county to identify the most desirable grants that we will seek and proceed from there.
Okay. Any question from supervisors? Supervisor McClure.
I have a question in relationship to doing the low-income eligibility, like for CDBG.
Yes.
When you, your initial study, you did all of Smith River, and then you brought it down to just the water district, right? Is that what you did?
We did what, as part of this program, because it was targeted towards the Smith River Community Hall, okay, and the beneficiary of that was the Community Services District, we were responsible for targeting the entire rate pain area of the district. So we, of course, have the maps, we identified the parameters of that area of which the Community Services District served.
So I guess my question lies in that your first, your first survey said you didn't hit the 51%.
The first, it wasn't actually a survey that was conducted initially, it was based merely on tax return data when compared to census data for the specific area.
And that would be, that would be okay with CDBG? Yes, okay.
I got it, I got it head on.
Okay.
Thank you.
I was a little confused there.
Any other questions from supervisors? Well, I'm glad to see, I mean, this isn't necessary, the billings are there for a long time, so hopefully we'll get some more data once you guys have all the federal stuff online, too.
Excellent.
Okay. Any public comment on this item? Okay, seeing no public comment, I will bring Mr. Carnegie back up.
Just a question about what we did before. In 2012, when we submitted our CDBG application for grant, we, one of the projects that we tried to get through was the improvements to Fred Haye Drive. At that time, we did not do an income survey, we relied, there's several ways that you can show eligibility, and what we used was the census tract information, and it came out at 50.7% or something like that. It was really close, but it just didn't, didn't get it done. This income survey, and of course, we didn't have the time or the capacity to do that income survey at the time. So yes, this, this income survey is going to help us tremendously.
Yeah. Okay. Any, any other board questions, comments? We're, okay, we're going to close the public hearing part of this, and I will entertain a motion to, to accept the results.
Move to approve.
It's been moved, second. It's moved in second. Tony, could you please pull the vote?
Supervisor McClure?
Yes.
Supervisor Gatlin?
Yes.
Supervisor Finnegan?
Yes.
Supervisor Hemmingson?
Yes.
Chair Sullivan?
Yes. Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Nice job, Jim.
Well done. Okay, so we are going to go back to the consent agenda, which, item 11, and I'm going to actually pull 12, because I got a quick question for you on that, Gary, and we'll vote on that. So I'll entertain a motion.
What members of the sheriffs? I just had a question about the change.
Okay, so we're going to pull that, which is item fif, no, 14?
13.
13. So item 11, 12, and 13 have been pulled. I'll entertain a motion to accept the rest of them.
Move to approve.
It's been moved?
Second.
Moved in second. So the motion was to accept all items on the consent agenda, minus 11, 12, and 13, which will be discussed separately. Any public comment? Okay, seeing no public comment on items we're going to vote on, I will close public comment, and Tony, could you please pull the vote?
Supervisor Gatlin?
Can we have a discussion? Yeah. Oh, sorry. Questions from board members? Yeah, Supervisor Finnegan, sorry. Go ahead.
Number two, we're adopting a resolution reappointing Jerry Cochran. I just want to commend Jerry and the great job he's been doing and how he represents us, and want to thank him for that. On number four, I already addressed regarding the AD LCD computer monitors, which I am going to support, but in the future want to work towards some sort of rehab program. And then on number six, I don't want to pull it, I just want a question answered. It is the public realignment plan, this public safety one, the Community CCP. It was signed by all the parties on August 16th, and the last one was August 17th. What took another two months to get before our board for us to approve it? Budget?
We had asked it to be, to coincide with the county budget and... We had asked it to be, to coincide with the county budget, and it never was brought forward for that one, and then there was a delay because I believe staff was out of town, so.
So my only request there is, while I will support this, next year, I would like to have a presentation to the board from that community corrections plan to inform us of what that plan is and what the results are. I think they'll have some more data at that time regarding the results-based models, too. It is working.
Before, any other public, or any questions from board members on those items minus the ones we pulled, 11, 12, 13? Okay, so I'm going to have Tony pull the vote on, well, we're going to pass it first and, or vote on it first. Tony, could you please pull the vote?
Supervisor Gaitlin?
Yes.
Supervisor Finnegan?
Yes.
Supervisor Hemmingsen?
Yes.
Supervisor McClure? Yes. Chair Sullivan?
Yes. Okay, Jerry. Congratulations on another two years.
Just make a few, thank you very much for the, for the appointment, I certainly appreciate it. A few things, the last time I talked to you, we talked about all electronic tolling that went into effect on March 27th. It seems to be going pretty well. Our contractor that we don't hire, Metropolitan Transportation Commission hires, they had a little glitch with, with the fact they, instead of getting 30,000, or 3,000 a day, they were getting 30,000 a day, and they, they thought they could do it with the same 10 people, and it didn't work. So we think we've got that straightened out. Last month, the, the board voted to move forward with a movable medium barrier. That's a $26.5 million project, of course, 80% of it's federal-funded. We did, we've got some out of MTC, and then I think we put in 2.5 million. In the last 20 years, there's been 17 crossover deaths that are caused because that wasn't, wasn't in place. We just finished up our 3A, there was the roadway replacement over the Anchorage House, redoing this on the North Anchorage House. We did, did that, plus the seismic safety issues that go into that, that building. We just finished, or we're finishing a contract with Caltrans, we leased ground under the freeway, the I-80 entrance between Third and Fourth and Stillman Perry Street for our daily bus storage. We'll have about 80 spaces there that, that our buses in the daytime will, will sit down there. We just awarded a contract again last month to rejuvenate the MS, or MV San Francisco, that was the 750 passenger, there were three of them, the Sonoma. We've already done the Marin, we're doing the San Francisco, and we think we're going to end up getting federal funding to do the, the Sonoma also, and that's a 20, 20.5 million dollar project. We're working on changing the ramps on all the vessels, so they're going to be lower, or entering on the lower decks instead of the upper decks. We're redoing the Sausalito Dock area, and then we had Jan Tarantino, our secretary, is retiring January 1st. She gave us notice, in fact, this week, we're going down to start interviewing for a replacement. Now, she's a 39-year employee, and so it's going to be awful tough to replace. So anyway, any questions? Any, anyone get any bills?
Well, I, I didn't get my bill, but my son's got two of them, so he's upset. I think it was during that period when you didn't have a.
Okay, did he get, get the fine and everything?
I don't know. I don't know, it was mail, but I, on Doyle Drive, when I was there a week ago for the 49er game, they were doing the median barrier with like the old lumber carrier moving it.
That's the state, they're doing that, that's a different machine than what we've got. They'll coincide once they're, well, they're not going to need it. They're not going to need it because they're building another five lanes adjacent to that where they tore down the old drive, then they've got the new one, so it's, you know.
But that's basically that same solid movable barrier.
Yeah, that's the same thing, except ours is a little different, and the reason for it is, we've only, we only have 62 feet of deck space for cars. So if you want your three lanes, we've got a, the outside lanes are the safest, there are trucks and buses, 11 feet. The next lanes have been 10 and 10, but now they're going to be, one's going to be 10, the, the outer lane is going to be nine and a half feet. That, that new, new outfit, the base, or the, the reason we got it is it's only a foot wide, most of them are two feet wide, so that's, that's it. So, so anyway.
Supervisor Hemmingsen and Supervisor Gaitlin?
He must have got a ticket.
I didn't get a ticket.
Oh, okay, all right.
I was just going to thank you, I think you're a great ambassador for Delmar County, and also, not trying to pick on your age, but your institutional knowledge that you have for other county issues is invaluable.
Well, thank you, yeah. Still working on some of those.
Yeah. Supervisor Gaitlin?
I actually didn't have a comment, Chair Sullivan, but now that you singled me out, I do have one which came to mind. Jerry, what's the difference from, is head, on the Golden Gate Bridge, there's, traffic's north and south?
Correct.
Is the, the, is the distance between that traffic span from east to west, has that been widened, or what's the?
You can't, you can't widen the bridge.
So you only have so much to work with?
You got a total of 90 feet.
Okay.
Okay, then, then you've got your walkways, and it's down to 62 feet of roadway, period. And, and people have said, in fact, Caltrans held us up on this thing for over three years, they wouldn't sign off, they wanted to put 12-foot lanes in. Put 12-foot lanes in and you lose a lane.
Yep.
And so, and that's not acceptable because of the in-and-out traffic.
So if we just, just walk me through this, from the center?
Let's go to the outside. The outside lanes?
All right.
Are, are both 11 feet.
Twenty-two.
And that's, that's for buses and trucks and bigger vehicles. The next two lanes have been, or the next four lanes, if you go all the way across, were 10 feet. Okay, then, we're taking a foot out of the middle, out of the middle, and it, and the way that's designed is that it's only a foot wide. So, so then the outs, the fast lanes are each going to be nine foot six inches. Now, so what, what happens, we can't, we can't control the speed of the bridge, but it went from 55 to 45, it's certainly helped, but that, it's, it's, Caltrans is the one that does it, they do their, their speed studies, and they say, oh, you know, we should actually raise it. Well, we don't want it raised because that causes more accidents. So, so anyway, what, what I told our general manager, I said, what we should do is to have them do a speed test as soon as we put that median barrier in there, and it's going to drop because everyone's going to be scared getting too close to that, that cement wall. And what it does, it deflects, deflects the cars back in the same direction so you don't get the, the head on, so.
Won't scratch your paint, or anything?
Yeah.
Maybe a little.
It'll give you a nice.
He would, he would make a good, good-looking.
Well, Jerry, I appreciate, I know I run into you lots of times on the plane, I think we all have at one time or another, and we appreciate your work, and just for the public certification, it is, it's a two-year appointment for the next two years.
Next two years.
And it's an unpaid position, just to.
It's, there's a lot of time involved.
Absolutely. So we appreciate the work you do. I do think you ought to take the sewer side barrier note, and then you can add on to the bridge on the side.
Well, you remember what I told you when we did that.
Yeah.
And, and I did exactly as I said, that I would vote for the net, I voted against the project, and now that's up to 50 million.
Incredible. All right.
All right. Thank you very much.
Okay, thanks, Jerry, thanks. Okay, I need to jump back for a second, too. Was there any public comment on, I think we already did public comment on that.
Fab wants to.
No. Did you want to speak, Fab? Okay. First time for everything, right? Okay. Okay, so, by the way, I need to recuse myself of item 14, I do have a conflict on that, on the consent agenda, that's a tenant in my building, so I'm going to back out on that one. Okay, so we're going to take up items 11, 12, and 13, which, for separate discussion, so let's go ahead and do this backwards. Item, item 13, Supervisor McClure pulled that, Sheriff Wilson, if you want to come up and.
I had 12 pulled up, I was trying to say.
Okay. And so item 13, for those listening, approve and adopt resolution 2013-04, authorizing the Delmar County Sheriff to sign and submit a request for proposal for the SB 1022 Adult Local Criminal Justice Facilities from the State and Community Corrections Construction Financing Program, that is a mouthful, as requested by Sheriff Coroner.
Yes, and the, the reason why I had, there are changes to that resolution that are, the original resolution had four preference criteria indicated, one, two, three, and four. After our meeting with the consultant, Vener, and the changes that were made in, in the design as to try to meet the needs of, of programming as well as the facility limitations that we had, it required us to do modifications and build out. The total that they estimate on the project will be 9.1 million. Our cash hard cost will be $109,000. That's not an up, I mean, it is a cost to us, but it's not at one time, it's not, you don't have to have that immediately, it is a three-year project, so it'll be over the period of the time of the project. We have letters of support from the CCP partners at this point in time for the project, for the project, because we, we desperately need program space, the current program space that we do have is, is very limited, and doesn't even have a restroom in it, doesn't have any equipment or facilities available to it, and so this will allow us to program. It'll also hopefully give us not only training facilities, training programming ability to have multiple programs going on at the same time so that we can do both male and female training, as well as if there's a conflict between individuals, we can have two trainings going on at the same time. It also will allow us to do some culinary training inside the kitchen, so that we hopefully can give some training to the, to the inmates within the kitchen facilities, so that we can give them some skills off-site. It'll allow us to do the educational training that we, that we have now put into the programming, but it'll allow us to have the equipment necessary to really be able to do that on a better basis than we currently ask, and hopefully we'll expand our training programs as well as, not only to the high school GED, but also hopefully to some college programs for the long-term.
Okay, so I think there was only one question on this.
Okay, so what it did do is, is because of the changes, we could not include preference two and three, and so because of the modifications to the original.
So what was the real estate due diligence?
That would, that would be, and we did the, on the building itself, on the actual sheriff's office building itself, we, we had a title check on it, and we, the only agreement that we have in place is with the courts, AOC, over the, over the, that portion of the building. But because of the change of the plan, we were looking at having to utilize or potentially utilizing that, that county corner building and that spot as a, as a modification. Because we didn't have time to do that, we could not do the full due diligence on the property because the expansion of the.
You're not going outside to seek?
No, no.
Footprint, therefore you don't need the SEQA. So those two have been admitted because of design change?
Because of design change, yes.
That was my only question.
Okay. Okay, I'll entertain a motion on this one. Item, so moved.
Just a second, it looks like.
Sheriff Coroner, to clarify, the question was that you weren't going outside of the footprint? After our last discussion, I.
Originally we were, but the changes require us to go outside the footprint, so that would make a modification to SEQA, which we had already had the SEQA request in, but this, this is, requires us to go outside the footprint of, of the existing building, so.
I think you need to clarify for the board, are you going outside of the footprint, or are you not?
Yes.
Then why wouldn't you still need the SEQA compliance?
We will, but we had SEQA because originally, the, the original intention was not to, but because of the changes, we, we're going outside, so we need to get.
I guess here's where I'm confused, that the one that you passed out today?
Correct.
Has omitted the SEQA compliance section.
Because we, we have not met it at this point in time. The preference was that we did.
Originally, it said that you're seeking funding for us to, to make that happen. And also for the real estate due diligence is what, was that you were seeking funding for the submittal of a complete initial real estate due diligence package. So those are both gone now, but it would tell me that you're still doing that.
That's correct. I mean, we would be, yes.
So I'm not sure why they're omitted, I, I'm confused. I just got this this morning.
Right.
I think that the question that I, that I thought I heard you say was whether or not SEQA would be required. Going outside of the footprint under the grant requires it.
Under Section 4, Authorization to Proceed with Project, in our documentation that was in our, our original agenda packet, under Authorization to Proceed with Project, there was a preference, a preference criterion of number two, the real estate due diligence, and a number three, the SEQA compliance, and that, both of that, that language has been omitted from the resolution.
Correct.
Okay.
He's not able to meet the SEQA compliance.
Oh, okay, I got it. Thank you. Not that you're not going to do it.
Sheriff.
This is not done, okay.
The other part of that, I think that you probably need to explain to the board, is the impact to the land that your, your plan currently covers, which is that building on the corner.
Yes, and, and if, if the, if we are approved, we are looking to change the, the design of our current Sallyport, and that would require an entrance and an exit, that would, that would require us to take on that, that corner building, or that corner lot that is there at Sixth and, yeah, where 4H is currently, currently, is currently facilitated.
So does this, does this reduce the, I guess, the appeal to, of getting the grant?
Without the two preference points?
Yeah.
According to our consultant, we will be right in, in the ballpark with the preferences. And he believes that the, the appeal, the program, and the fact that we're not building beds, which is, which is a negative in, in the guise of the, of the state, that, that he believes that we stand a fairly, a fairly good chance going forward, but again, it's, it's a small amount of money, $100 million total for, for small counties, with a $20 million cap on each of the recipients, they can expand it out, but that's what we're looking at right now. Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, seeing no questions, I'll entertain a motion.
I will move to approve and adopt resolution 2013-043, authorizing the Delmar County Sheriff to sign and submit a request for proposal for the SB 1022 Adult Local Criminal Justice Facilities from the State and Community Corrections Construction Financing Program as requested by the sheriff.
Second.
Move to the second. Any public comment on this item? Okay, seeing no public comment, I will bring it back to the board unless there's any other further questions. Tony, could you please pull, please pull the vote?
Supervisor McClure?
Yes.
Supervisor Finnegan?
Yes.
Supervisor Hemmingsen?
Yes.
Supervisor Gaitlin?
Yes.
Chair Sullivan?
Yes. I'm going to go to item 12. Approve and authorize the Director of Health and Human Services to sign nutrition education obesity prevention NEALP agreement with the State Department of Public Health for the period October 1st, 2013 through September 30th, 2016, for a total of 376,419, as requested by Director of Health and Human Services.
One, one clarification, one clarification that Mr. Phillips mentioned, actually, they are identified as a partner in the, in the grant itself.
Okay, that was my question.
Yes, specifically, they're identified, I just did not encapsulate that in my board report, so, but they're absolutely a partner, they've always been and will continue to be.
So there's no reason to table this?
No, no, no. It's there. No.
That was my question. Okay, so I'll entertain a.
Chair, can I ask a question of Mr. Blattner?
Yes, sir.
So this will not be tabled, and my concern is that we have this vehicle, this rural human services mobile kitchen, and I didn't see anything in the board report that that vehicle and its currently trained staff were going to be incorporated. So you're telling me that we are going to move forward and rural human services will be part of this 376,419?
Rural human services, along with all of our other community partners that I did mention, are definitely part of our collaboration, our work together, and where we can utilize that vehicle, we will utilize it. Apparently, we just utilized it last week, I guess, or today, and we will, we have no plans to stop doing that.
Okay. Well, then that's, that's my clarification.
Yes, absolutely.
Okay. Did we get a motion on this?
Move to approve.
Second.
Move to second. Public comment? Seeing no public comment, I will bring it back to the board. Tony, please pull the vote.
Supervisor Hemmingsen?
Yes.
Supervisor Gaitlin?
Yes.
Supervisor McClure?
Yes.
Supervisor Finnegan?
Yes.
Chair Sullivan?
Yes. Okay, we are on item 11, and Supervisor Gaitlin, you requested this would be pulled. This is approved and authorized, chair to sign an agreement with Remy Vista Incorporated for medical-eligible children, youth, and their families, mental health services from July 1st, 2013 through June 30th, 2014, not to exceed 1, 1,439,000 dollars.
Actually, Chair Sullivan, I did not pull it, as yet. We were going through this, we discussed this, and I, I did not pull it, but now that we are open for discussion, I, I.
Sure.
Well.
Okay, so any questions on this one? We're, we're going to.
I'm, I'm gonna, I'm going to ask a question because it was brought up during our comments here in the open session.
Yes.
All of us have been advised, I don't want to besmirch or, or, or not, absolutely congratulate the work, the fine work of the Remy Vista employees and their therapists, I've met many of them, they are doing an excellent job, let that mission continue. But there are some allegations that we have not addressed as, from an employee of Remy Vista, and I'm not sure it's connected to this exact, so I think we can move forward on this, but at some point, we need to address the allegations in the letter from that employee, or what I'm now learning is a former employee of Remy Vista, about issues other than attached to the Remy Vista program. So, he's made allegations outside of that, so I would like to have that discussed at a later meeting.
So as far as number twelve goes, I'd move to approve and authorize the Chair to sign the agreement with Remy Vista for Medi-Cal Eligible Children, Youth and Their Families Mental Health Services from July first, two thousand thirteen, through June thirtieth, twenty fourteen, not to exceed.
It's been moved in second. Any public comment on this item, which is number eleven in the agenda? Okay, seeing no public comment on number, number eleven, the contract with Remy Vista and the county, I will bring it, close public comment, bring it back to the board. Tony, could you please pull the vote?
Supervisor McClure?
Yes.
Supervisor Finnegan?
Yes.
Supervisor Gitlin?
Yes.
Supervisor Hemmingsen?
Yes.
Sheriff Sullivan?
Yes. Okay, that's been passed. Going to item twenty-seven. Under general government regular items, approve and authorize indirect staff to process the Title III funding application submitted by Sunset High School for the two thousand fourteen forest-related education program, and return the item for final action by the board after statutory requirements to notify the public and the resource advisory committee have been fulfilled as requested by Community Development Department Planner, Mr. Hooper.
Sure. So this item is a, you approved the same project last year, it's the forest education program. The RAC was unable to fund the program, if you recall, last year, so they came to the county for Title III funding. In order to fulfill the requirements of the Title III program, as you indicated, it will have to come back, so we can talk about it in further detail in December, if you're interested, if you have any questions, I'm available. Mr. Fariqas was here, but he did have to leave, apparently.
Okay.
I move to approve.
It's moved, second. It's been moved, the second. Any public comment on the, the RAC funding? Seeing no public comment, I'll bring it back to the board. Yeah, I, just a, just a note, though, I, I, I think we talked about it on the flight back when we were both ran into each other, it would be good if we could continue to go along the NEPA training also. Besides this particular thing, I'm just putting as a, a subnote, is the more training we can get on NEPA for staff like yourself, I think that is a very good use of the funds, of, of the RAC funds, so.
Absolutely. And Title III, you know, lists community planning as county planning specifically, is a, is a possible use of those funds, so completely agree with that.
Okay, thank, thanks for your input. Tony, could you pull the vote?
Supervisor Hemmingsen?
Yes.
Supervisor Gitlin?
Yes.
Supervisor Finnegan?
Yes.
Supervisor McClure?
Yes.
Sheriff Sullivan?
Yes. Okay, item twenty-eight. Approve and authorize the Chair to sign a letter to Energy and Natural Resources Committee supporting healthy forests, as requested by the county administrative officer.
This letter was forwarded us by RC. RC, it is a, it's a proactive approach to encourage the federal government to have a more active management style in regards to the forest.
I'll entertain a motion on this one.
Move to approve.
Second. It's been moved in second. Any public comment on this? Bring it back to the board. That was one thing in DC when we were back there in April, that, that was very apparent is that they need, in fact, Tidwell was under, he was on, on, basically, he was under the gun at that point, because there's a lack of management in the forest, and it's not just Delmar County, it's all over the United States, so I agree a hundred percent with this. Tony, could you pull the vote?
Supervisor McClure?
Yes.
Supervisor Gitlin?
Yes.
Supervisor Finnegan?
Yes.
Supervisor Hemmingsen?
Yes.
Sheriff Sullivan?
Yes. Going on to, it's passing unanimously, moving on to item thirty. Review and provide feedback if needed in relation to the Local Childcare and Development Planning Council Program. Summary of the self-evaluation findings in agency annual report, as requested by Coordinator for Local Planning Council for Childcare and Development. Hello, Doreen.
Doreen Wells, Local Planning Council for Childcare and Development, and we just completed our self-evaluation and, in a public meeting, and compliant in all areas, but we just wanted to ask if there's, if you can give us any feedback, if there's any information that you'd like us to provide in the future?
Any.
Any thoughts?
Supervisor Finnegan?
Well, I, you know, appreciate you to go on that extra mile coming before the board because you already had the public meeting for the input.
Yes, we do.
I just, my input is doing a great job, keep it up.
Okay, thank you.
Do it.
Yep, same, same here.
Okay, thank you.
Always a priority. Thanks. Tony, could you pull the vote?
There's no vote.
Oh, there's no vote. Review and provide, okay, non-action, thanks. This has been a short meeting, too. Okay, item thirty-one. Consider miscellaneous legislative and budget matters pertinent to the county of Delmar, Delmar, authorize the Chair to sign and send appropriate letters with respect to matters pending before the state or federal governments.
We've had most of the letters before the board right now, they are in recess until January. The update is that the governor took on over eight hundred different bills, and he vetoed about eighty-six of those, so there's a considerable amount of legislation that went into, that was considered and will become law. There were a number of, of bills that we were monitoring, and some of those have been chapered. The majority of those actually are either in suspension, or in committee, or in appropriations, and have not been taken up, so those are the ones that are most specific to our county. But he, he did take up over eight hundred, and so there's seven hundred plus out there that were passed.
Wow, that's incredible. Okay, I am gonna jump back to the urgency item that we did add to the agenda on today, and that basically, it's a campaign, essentially, it would be direct staff to complete the following tasks in relation to the PILT monies, which is the payment in lieu of taxes monies owed to Delmar County. One, send an invoice to Department of Fish and Wildlife for the past due PILT monies owed to Delmar County. Two, draft and send press release to local media. Three, send an opinion editorial to the editor of our local newspaper. Four, draft and send letter with a copy of the finalized invoice to Governor Brown, with copies to Secretary of Natural Resources Agency's John Laird, the Director of the